Hello, welcome to our Tuesday evening council meeting. We have, there he is, we have our planning co-director John Connor who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Director Connor.
Thanks, Josh. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to begin.
Yes, thank you Mr. Mayor. All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Councilor of Ward 5.
I understand we have minutes?
We do, at the June 3rd meeting.
May I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Counselor Glant followed by Counselor Chittam. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 5, yes. Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
We are now up to public comment. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record and please indicate if you are a Lewiston resident. Because this is the business meeting of the City Council, all questions should be directed to the Mayor, who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for the City Council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the City Administration Office. Please start when you're ready.
I intend to. Thank you. Nope, wrong button. Pass the excitement. Charles Arthur Soul, 42, Bradley Street, Lewiston, Maine. Vietnam-era veteran, 72 years old. And I don't like being complicit to a genocide in Gaza with American-made arms and ammunition. Nor do I like their sneak attack on Iran. They have a right to fill their own destiny, like we're trying to tell Ukraine to do as they're being eliminated. Thank you, have a nice day.
Further public comment relating to Lewiston city business?
Matthew Agren, Ward 4. It's been two months since this very group with no input from the public. At the end of a meeting during the new business session chose to end the ability of the public to comment on anything on the Lewiston Police Department's Facebook page. And you did it because as I said before, well, there are some dumb people who post dumb stuff on the internet. Unfortunately, in a free society, we are able to post and speak what even might make some people uncomfortable on items that don't violate the service agreements. I hope this body would consider, would either reconsider that decision, or if you're not going to reconsider that decision, why don't you expand that to all city social media policies, pages? Because after all, there are dumb people out there posting dumb things on the internet. They could post it to any of these cities' social media pages. Next, I wish that this council would reach out to our legislative delegation and ask them in a resolve to make sure that funding is secured for mental health services as well as our hospitals, so we don't lose any of those within the city. A resolve from you may carry more weight in Augusta than one from just a single citizen. And finally, you've all adopted rules for public comment. Yet at our last meeting, these rules were not followed. Words have meaning, as our council president has said over and over. Per your adopted rules, there is now a hard three-minute clock for all people speaking during public comment. It's not the moderator's decision who gets to go over it or not. But to be fair, a supermajority vote by all of you could allow for longer comments. Also, there's an 18-minute hard stopping point for the first public comment session, which was pointed out by our council president. To extend it would have required a supermajority vote by you. It is not the major, it is not our moderator's call. I ask all of you to please hold to the rules that you have voted for. Otherwise, why did you adopt them? Yes, it was very important for us to hear the woman speak about how the city failed her, about her mother's home. Now destroyed by an issue that had been brought to the city's attention for years and nothing had been done. But she was well over the three-minute time clock. Not stopped, no vote taken publicly. If it was, if a vote was taken that was done outside the room, I believe that would constitute an illegal meeting by you all. If I'm wrong, please correct me. Have a nice day.
Jim Leisen, 26 Taylor Hill Road in Lewiston, Ward 1, a former two-term city counselor. I'm going to speak on one of the issues that is before the council, but I wanted to let you know that we're still developing a fair rent strategy. And I want to let the realtors know in Lewiston that we are not at war. I mean, they, I've heard them use that term. We're at war against this. And it's, there's no war that's happening, not that we're fighting anyway. And, and as you know, out-of-state companies are, are buying up Maine housing stock, including single-family homes. They own 25% of single-family homes across the United States. So it's not just apartment buildings that they're getting, they're getting single-family homes. Something needs to be done, and I want this council to take some action. And we're meeting tomorrow with the Fair Rent team of Maine People's Alliance and hopefully we'll be able to develop some strategies and some techniques that this council can use to, to really, you know, really deal with the issues of renters across this community. Thank you.
So can I have his two minutes? I'm not sure how long this will take. I'll try to keep it to three. My name is Lynn Philip-Han, and I live in Lewiston and have lived in Lewiston all my life. My mother lived in Lewiston. My father migrated from Quebec, and I am Franco-American. I was married and currently live on Hillcrest Avenue in Lewiston. And the entrance to the street of Jill Street, which is in Mr. Glant's ward, is in desperate need of repair. It is the only access road that goes in and out. It's Jill Street, you turn a corner onto Primrose, and then you turn another corner onto Hillcrest, and then it goes around in, in a square. I moved, my husband and I moved there, I like to call it our retirement love nest. And when we finally got moved in and we were all set and I started going in and out, in and out, this was three years ago, it was like, this, this is horrible. So I went to Public Works and was met not at the entrance, there was no office to go into. And so the person that I spoke with wanted me to go ahead and email them pictures and to do all the work. And that wasn't going to, that wasn't going to work. Nothing was going to be done and possibly be able to move it from scheduled on 2027 to 2025. I believe that the street, Jill Street, the entrance, is a, not met with fire codes. The city bus does not come up Jill Street to pick up the children in our neighborhood because it's that bad. They stand on Pleasant Street and wait with their parents, watching them as they get on the bus. There's not room for two cars to go by. If there is a UPS truck or a FedEx truck that goes by, that's no longer.
Excuse me, that's time, thank you. Administrator, Deputy Administrator Mellon, yes, my, my card is there. I encourage you to email me and I can follow up with you and/or connect you with Counselor Glant.
I challenge, I challenge all of you to find a street in Lewiston as worse as this one. I request and would ask Mr. Glant to come and visit our neighborhood and take a look at that. And where you live in your house and you have visitors coming from other states, coming to visit you in your home.
Thank you.
That we pay taxes just like everybody else.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you.
That's everybody else, we pay taxes to.
Thank you.
And to have this should be an embarrassment.
Thank you for being here.
I know it's an embarrassment to me, and I'm very disappointed.
Please email me, thank you so much. Further public comment?
Email you with what exactly?
Your contact info. Further public comment? Public comment is now closed?
We have 18 minutes. We have 18 minutes to be able to talk.
I, I'm sorry, thank you.
We have 18 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I believe we have the city administrators' report.
We do, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Administrator Kane-Rath.
Yeah, starting off, public listening sessions, I want to thank everyone who attended our event at Geiger School this last week. It was a really great turnout, really some great points, some constructive feedback. So thank you to everyone who came out to that event. We'll be looking to schedule another one in July. Details of that will be forthcoming in the near future. And again, we are doing these monthly. We're looking to rotate them at different locations around the city, obviously to make sure everyone has equal opportunity and to be visible in different neighborhoods throughout the city. So thanks again to everyone for coming out this past week. Just a quick note about cyber threats with some of the increasing issues with area hospitals. I've gotten a couple of questions about just cyber threats and how prepared we are. So I've reviewed with our MIS department the city's cybersecurity efforts. Our director has reported no increased traffic or out of the ordinary events. Our firewall reports reflect nothing beyond usual traffic, but they are keeping a close eye on the situation in light of other, obviously, issues at the hospitals, et cetera. So just an update there, we seem to be in good shape. They are on it, they are closely monitoring everything. Back on Kennedy Park in our downtown, new signage will be going up at the entrances to Kennedy Park to remind park visitors of our current rules and enforceable ordinances on the books, including no smoking, no drug use, no littering, disorderly indecent behavior will not be tolerated, and park curfew hours begin at 10:00 PM. So again, we are being vigilant with the park in making sure that behaviors are consistent with our ordinances on the books and also the standards that we want to see in our downtown and in our park here. So we are working to ensure that Kennedy Park is open and accessible and inviting to all residents and visitors of the city of Lewiston, so the work continues there. In addition, we're actively monitoring behavior around the library and throughout our downtown. Voidering immediately outside the library, as you know, is not allowed. Our police department is closely watching that situation. Also, blocking the sidewalk in front of the library with shopping carts or other personal items is prohibited. And we are keeping a close eye on that situation as well, and I think there has been some progress there. It's been, I'd say, better, at least the past few weeks, but we will continue to be vigilant on that also. And all of this is, as I said, continuing to set a higher standard for the behavior that is acceptable throughout our downtown and throughout our parks. So my thanks to our police department and Public Works for their efforts, and the work goes on. This is just the beginning. We have a lot of work to do, but we are not going to let up on this. So thank you to all staff for your work there. A few weeks ago, on May 20th, you heard a presentation from Special Assistant Joe Grochmal on a busking festival. The city is actively exploring opportunities, obviously, to strengthen the cultural and economic vitality of our downtown, and we're looking at doing a busking festival. So Joe has bring his firsthand experience, having worked with one of these busking festivals in another location. Over the past several weeks, Joe has been meeting with professional festival and event planning firms to assess potential partners for developing and executing a high-quality event that is welcoming, inclusive, and engaging for both residents and visitors. We've received three competitive proposals from experienced planning organizations that are evaluating their strength. So a final decision on how to move forward is expected in the coming days, and we look forward to providing some further updates as this promising initiative takes shape. Lastly, I do just want to follow up on what we heard at our last meeting. We did meet on Old Lisbon Road, in the accident on Old Lisbon Road. We met with Public Works and the police department this past week to discuss the recent accident and how to take proactive steps to try and prevent a similar accident in the future, like the one involving the Dumont property. So in order to prevent or greatly reduce the chances of a vehicle traveling at the high rate of speed that it was from leaving the road and causing damage to area structures, really, the best course of action, what's necessary, is to build a high berm along that section of the roadway, as well as some other steps, including some substantial lighting changes, some flashing lights, and some signage warning drivers at the upcoming curve. Also, in the future, what else is possible is potentially rumble strips in that area also, but the berm is going to be the key piece in avoiding an accident similar to what happened there. So Public Works is on this. We're going to be putting together a proposed timeline with PW, and we'll be getting out some updates as that goes along as their planning and engineering process is complete. And we'll have more work to do there. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much Administrator Kane-Rath. Madam Clerk, I believe we're at item number one.
We are. Item number one, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for the Liberty Festival. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application from the Liberty Festival Committee for outdoor musical concerts to be held at Veterans Memorial Park and surrounding areas on July 3rd, 4th, and 5th as part of the Liberty Day Festival, and to authorize a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, to the Liberty Festival Committee for the outdoor music concerts contingent upon positive recommendations from the police department, fire department, code land use officer, and code health officer regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
May I have a motion, please?
Yes, sir, you may.
Counselor, Chittam followed by Counselor Glant. Discussion among the council. Counselor Glant.
We've done a lot of these, and it's always contingent on our departments to come feedback. Why can't this be done prior to coming to us? I'm just curious.
So some of it is a timing issue, Counselor. Because of the council meeting dates and the timeline for council meeting dates, these, the ordinance does require a public hearing, so it has to go to City Council for approval. Sometimes the festivals are still finalizing all of their logistics. Maybe they've already had one meeting with the city departments, and some of the departments said would really like XYZ and your plan to change, so they need to come back. So we've always had this language because we want to secure the council approval because of the public hearing date, and we want to assure the council that staff would never issue these permits, even though you've approved them, unless we have the sign-off from all the applicable departments. So that's why we have that language in there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further comment from the counselors. Public comment at this time.
Hi, I'm Kathy McDonald. I'm the chair of the Liberty Festival. The dates are actually the 4th, 5th, and 6th. So on the 4th, we'll have entertainment, starting at 4:30 PM, and the fireworks will be going off at 9:30 PM. If it rains, the fireworks will be on, on the 5th. We'll also have entertainment, starting at 5:00 PM in Veterans Park. And then on the 6th, we have our salute to the American flag. We'll have two Army National Bands there this year, starting at 11:00 AM. So we'll have two of those, and we're still looking for a veterans group to do the flag retirement ceremony. But we also have some public citizens that are well-versed in being able to provide that. So we've been working hard, and we think it's going to be a great event, and we hope you all can attend and support the event, and I'm here for any questions.
I understand Elvis is coming back.
Elvis will be there on the 4th. We were hoping to have him on the 5th too, but he has to be in Nashville or somewhere else on the 5th, so we can only have him one day, but he'll be there. But on the 5th, we have a Lady Gaga tribute band. On the 5th. So that should be kind of fun. And we also have, on the 5th, we have Joanna Yous and the Ditch Lily. And we also have, on the 5th, we have Joanna Hughes and the Ditch Lily. She was Maine's Got Talent winner last year. So, she'll be performing as well. So, if anybody else does a single act and wants to perform for an hour, because Elvis has just told us he won't be able to be there on the 5th, so if anybody else wants to fill in that hour, let me know.
Thank you. Further question, Counselor Chittam, yes.
Yes, thank you. Ms. McDonald, your application says July 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th. The motion read 3rd, 4th, and 5th. You said 4th, 5th, and 6th. Can we get some consistency on the dates?
4th, 5th, and 6th. The 3rd is just like a setup time that will set up some things in Veterans Park.
Madam Clerk, is that necessary to be included in the application on the 3rd for setup time?
Well, the application is just asking for reserving the park use, but if you just want to change the amendment via a friendly amendment, if that's agreeable to the makers of the motion, that would be the easiest way to incorporate those dates.
I made the motion, and I'm trying to figure out what dates to put in the amendment.
I think 4, 5, and 6, because those will be the dates that they're having the entertainment.
All right. I will propose a friendly amendment to change the dates on 4, 5, and 6.
Counselor Glant.
I'll agree.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, Kathy.
All right, thank you.
And is Marcus here?
Yes.
Marcus, thank you so much for being here.
Marcus is our co-chair.
Yes, thank you both so much. Further public comment, but this is an agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Item number two.
Item number two, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for the Pine Street Block Party. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application from community credit union for outdoor musical concerts to be held on Pine Street and the surrounding area on August 25th as part of the Pine Street Block Party and to authorize a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, to the event organizers for the outdoor music concerts, contingent upon positive recommendations from the police department, fire department, code land use officer, and code health officer regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second by Counselor Harriman. Discussion. Public comment. Back to the council. Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. Just curious as to why this application was dated January 6th and is now coming before us for August?
Sure, so these are all requested from the festivals to align with the budget timing, because a lot of them are asking for waiver of the license fee or waiver of the police department and whatnot. So, they're all due in January to time it with the March budget prep, but we don't bring them to you for approval, again, until later, closer to the event date, in case the event organizers, again, have any changes to their logistics.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't know what we'd do without you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor.
Well, she was gone for a meeting and we barely survived.
You were fine, you were fine.
Deputy Administrator O'Malley, you did great at the time. Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. I just wanted to say this is always such a great event every year, and I hope everybody comes out. It's August 25th, 4 to 7.
It's well attended. We have hundreds, if not thousands, there. Further comments? Madam Clerk, did we go to public comment for this?
We did, yes, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor Glant, five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
Seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
I'm number three.
Item number three, public hearing in first passage to amend the business license ordinance for the licensing of syringe service programs. Requested action that the proposed amendments to Chapter 22 Business Licenses, Article 18 Syringe Service Programs of the city's Code of Ordinances receive first passage by a roll call vote and that the public hearing for said ordinance be continued to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second by Counselor Chittam, followed by Counselor Glant. Director Connor, thank you so much for being here. Please kick us off.
Good evening, Mayor Shaleen and counselors. Thank you for the opportunity to present this ordinance to the council tonight. However, at this time, I do not feel that in its current version, this ordinance is ready to be voted on. At the May 20th workshop, I presented to you a draft of this ordinance and anticipated that it would take one, if not a couple, additional workshops to iron out all of the details of the ordinance so that we could present to you the very best possible product. Unfortunately, we haven't had those workshops, and I do not feel that this is the best product. I believe we can do better. So, with that, I would humbly ask the council to further discuss the substance of this ordinance tonight, provide staff with more clarity with respect to several areas of the draft, and allow staff to work internally with the different departments that will play a significant role administering and enforcing this ordinance, as well as allowing the city attorney to further assist us to ensure that we craft the very best possible ordinance to present to this body. I believe that the current draft is a very good start and almost where it needs to be. I also believe that with additional dialogue tonight, the clarity staff needs can be realized. Thank you again for your time. I look forward to working with this body to craft the very best version of this ordinance to be presented at the very earliest available date.
Thank you very much, Director Connor, and I appreciate your service to our city. Having heard Director Connor's comments, I think we will discuss here, provide feedback among the council. We'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back to the council. Counselor Chittam, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Connor, thank you for those comments. I feel the same way that this ordinance is not quite ready for primetime. It was presented to us four weeks ago, and we have had opportunity to comment on it individually, but we've never met as a body to do that. This was brought to us perhaps a little prematurely, but I think we can salvage this by having a mini workshop tonight on this agenda item to get a sense of the council as a body back to you on what things need to be tweaked and adjusted so that you can bring that back to us then, perhaps on the 15th of July. My intent here is to engage the council in substantive discussion on the large points, the major issues that would be addressed here. I'm sure we've all received the emails, a deluge of emails this afternoon concerning this. So, I would open this up to council discussion. I would hope that we would stick to the large substantive issues. I have a number, as you know me, I have a number of commas that are in the wrong place. I'm going to stay away from that tonight and reserve that for later on down the road. I would like to start by talking about three issues that I believe need to be addressed and discussed in this code. The first is the one-for-one needle exchange, which is a key element of the proposed draft. I'd like to get a sense from the council on how they feel about that. Number two is the zoning issue, the limitations, the setbacks, the good neighbor policy extension a quarter of a mile out. And number three is the limitation of only two SSPs in the city of Lewiston. I disagree with all of those, but I want to hear from my fellow counselors as to their positions on those three. Those really are the meat of what I think are the substantive issues in this ordinance. And I'll yield the floor now so that we can begin a discussion I hope will be orderly and productive. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chittam. Yes, Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be orderly. I believe too, we are not ready, and I don't believe this is the setting, wasting time, quite frankly, during our regular meeting. We have enough on our agenda to do, and this discussion could go on for hours. We normally set a particular time. I don't think that our meetings are designed for us to discuss ordinances. If we think it's good or minor changes, it gets to move on. If we don't think it's good, then we back up and we go ahead and schedule a time as a group to do this with the right people here, and we're not going to have all these people in the audience who have other more important things they came for to sit around and hear us hash out something that should have been done in another setting. For me, it's not productive time. I will be involved with it. I do agree partially with a lot he's talking about, but I don't think it's good use of city time and our time right now or the public's time to hash this out.
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. So, I agree with Counselor Chittam. I don't think that this really is ready for primetime. I have several of the same concerns that he did. I think the most pressing one would be the zoning issues, which I brought up back a little over a month ago now, that the way the zoning is written, it effectively almost prohibits SSPs from operating in the city. I do see that we got a map that although it didn't incorporate all of the restrictions, it really illustrates how restrictive it would be. So, I'm concerned about the location. Also, the one-to-one exchange ratio, I don't feel like that's really the role of a city to license. That's more of a, you know, that's more of the clinical oversight that the state provides, and I think that they have the knowledge and the skill to set those policies. Similar with mobile exchanges, I think that, you know, this ordinance proposes that they're completely banned. I think they would be a good option as long as they are, you know, I think the city's role is to to say where they can operate and to provide a permit. And, because I just want to know when and where they're operating. And that's really my overall goal with this ordinance, I think, is to establish zoning, not as restrictive as this, and to establish a business license. I think the, how they run their particular operations as far as the exchange rate and everything like that is not really the city's purview. As far as process tonight, I would like to hear from everyone in the public who showed up to speak about this. I think they will inform, they'll inform the direction that we go. The workshop that we had with people from Maine CDC and some others a couple of weeks ago was very informative for me, and I think that we might learn a few more things tonight. I have a few other minor, more minor things with this ordinance that I've expressed as concerns, but they're not really as big as these other ones. So, I'll yield to someone else and I hope we have a productive discussion.
Counselor Sol.
Thank you for being here, Director. So, I respectfully disagree that this is a waste of time. We're all here, we have a draft, we have two different maps, and we have a lot of people who I believe were here for this specific reason. So, I think it's important that we have this discussion tonight. It doesn't mean that it's going to finalize it, but we're here and we should discuss it.
I agree with that. Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Connor, for being here and bringing this up and to say that it's not ready at this time. I appreciate that. For me, there's a lot of things in this that I don't agree with. I don't agree with eliminating mobile exchanges. That is just going to hurt a lot of things. I don't agree with the one-on-one exchange, zoning out services and all that stuff. I think you're just creating barriers to a lot of the services that people need. Okay, especially to keep this in a harm reduction phase. And in a way, we really need to give everybody the most services we can provide for the people in the city. Although, we do need to respect other people in the city too. We need to be a good neighbor and good partners. Also, I would really like to propose having people that are professionals on this subject sit down with you, bring it to the table, discuss what should be in the ordinances before it comes back to us. Because these are the people that work in the trenches, day in and day out. These are the people that are in the know, and I think they can educate us at the city level in ways that we don't even know right now. I mean, I think it's very important to have them at the table. And when you come together, you put great minds together, things happen. And I think we can come up with a great ordinance or, I just think we're going to do good work that way. Okay, I'm at a loss for words right now. But again, I want to hear what everybody has to say because they are here for this, and I want the professionals to stand up and talk. So, appreciate that.
Oh, okay, all right. Yes, sorry, Counselor Najin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Connor, for this draft work. I think it is an excellent start. And I also completely disagree that this is not a conversation for this council meeting. There are many things that I would like to see changed in the ordinance, and I do think that ultimately, our goal is not to relitigate or to set public health policy. I think that the recommendations from the Maine CDC and also the SSPs as they operate in our city are, as far as public health is concerned, are paramount. I do think, however, to be very, very clear, that at some point in time, we have the right as a city to decide where our downtown is, what value it has, and to remove conflicts between incongruous and incompatible uses. At the end of the day, the ability for us to prosper as a city and the ability for us to meet the needs of our community and others who come to our community as a regional service provider can be done in the same space. We do not need conflicts where we're devaluing uses that are already established in order to, in order to meet the needs of a group of marginalized individuals within our community whose needs can still be met. So, you know, I think the conversations that we're going to have are going to be about the one-on-one. The recommendation that I see over the board is that a many-to-one is one of the policies that is highly advised. I do believe that there is an issue with the zoning the way it is currently proposed, and I think that there's an issue with the zoning with no restriction whatsoever. And so, I think we need to come to an agreement in that. There is no, I think there's some work we need to do with the good neighbor policy and also how to mitigate conflicts and resolve conflicts when they occur. And so, these are all pieces that, after getting feedback from the public that's here, we can kind of break down. One of the things that I think, when we pin the development within zoning districts, I think that's part of the challenge. At the end of the day, I would love to see an overlay that included Lowell Street, Bates Street, and Adams Way slash Locust Street as an SSP overlay zone. This would be an area in which we could determine to be of a better use. It's hard to describe what I'm trying to say, but ultimately, highest and best use for the highest tax value. Ultimately, I think we're running into challenges with where service providers are located in some cases and conflicts within the community for residents of the downtown and businesses downtown. And so, those are the things I would like to definitely discuss tonight, as well as, I'm sure, other sections, but...
Thank you. Yes, I agree with much as what, much, I agree with, much of, I agree with a lot of what has been said already. Thank you very much, counselors. You know, yeah, we need something that, you know, values individuals and protects the harm reduction efforts that are present in our community while recognizing that we're dealing with a sometimes challenging population and protects the needs of our businesses. Counselor Glant, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. At no time do I mean that I don't want to hear from the public tonight. They are obviously going to be instrumental in some of the decisions that we're going to make and what's going to go on. I'm not going down that particular road. But it took us four or five, I think five, meetings to take care of the homeless situation. We've had one for this, which is just as serious. So, you know, for me to rush through a first reading and make pen and ink changes doesn't make sense. That's where I'm coming from. We don't have all the facts, we know that. And are we going to grandfather what's already going on? If we do that, we're wasting our time because the two people here who, in the city, because they're authorized by the state, are going to continue doing what they're doing. You know, if we decide we want 10 McDonald's and it's 15, we can't tell five to shut down. We have to widdle through attrition. So, this thing here does nothing for what we conceive to be a problem on this council by some individuals. I hope you all realize that. We grandfathered everybody for the homeless situation. I would suspect we'd have to grandfather the two organizations here and what's going on. That's why I don't think we're prepared to make any decisions. We are prepared to hear from the public and take notes, but we need another meeting to talk about those big issues talk about those big issues that never came up because we never had a chance to speak about them. It was never open. That's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Are we, Counselor Chittam, did you have something?
I was going to suggest that we go to public comment and then bring the debate back to council after we've heard what the people who are here have to say to us tonight.
I agree with that. I was just going to say, it sounds like we're ready to hear from public comment. We are now going to public comment for this agenda item. I know there's a lot of you, I recognize many of you, thank you so much for your service to our community. There's a lot of you that may want to speak, so we will definitely be observing a strict three-minute time limit. Okay, public comment is now open. And if we can, just to proceed efficiently and orderly here, if we can just create a line so that way we can have one right after the other, that'd be great.
Are we ready to go?
We are.
Mr. Mayor.
I guess we're not. Hold on, Counselor Chittam.
I would simply like to ask everyone to enunciate your names clearly, please. I like to keep notes, and I like to know who is speaking, so, thank you.
My name is Dani Shiflett, and I am a person in long-term recovery.
One second. If we can keep chatter in the council chambers non-existent, if you need to have a conversation, please head out to the hall. Thank you. Please continue.
So Dani Shiflett, I'm a person in long-term recovery from substance abuse disorder, and I first became addicted in these streets. The zoning, as you guys said, would essentially shut down SPVs, and the one-to-one is something that I just want to touch on. The first time I ever heard of a syringe service, I thought to myself, like, what? They're going to give needles to a junkie like me? And then I went to a harm reduction site, and I found out that it was so much more than that. There was so much more there to be offered, and I met a recovery coach there. And every week, she said to me, Dani, would you like to go to treatment? Can I connect you to services? And I always said, no, I'm good, I'm fine, I love my life. Fast forward to incarceration. I had sat for a minute, the fog cleared, and I started making a list of all the things I was going to do when I got out. I was going to get my daughter back, I was going to get a job, I was going to get an apartment. And I made it two hours out the door before I had a dirty needle in my arm. I have hepatitis C because of a one-to-one. I wasn't, didn't have one to turn in, I could not get one to safely inject. I don't want to see that happen to my brothers and sisters in this community. I don't want to see another person contract an infectious disease when there's a solution and we don't have to put the one-to-one into place. I don't want to see zoning that is going to shut down a program that ultimately saved my life. In my darkest, darkest minute, you know where I went for help? The harm reduction site. You know who got me into treatment? The folks at the SSP. Please think long and hard, long and hard about this. We need this program for our community to survive. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Shaleen, and esteemed council members. I'd like to thank Dani for her testimony. That was compelling. We've talked about zoning. My colleagues are here. We're each taking a different component of this, so you don't have to hear the same thing over and over again.
I'm sorry, did you, there's some questions here among the council. Did you say your name?
I did not introduce myself.
Oh, yes, please, let's do that.
Catherine Ryder. I do not live in Lewiston, I live in Wyndham. I work here in Lewiston. I've worked here in Lewiston for 34 years, formerly at Tri-County Mental Health Services, now at Spurwink. And I am the Senior Director of Strategic Initiatives there. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I do want to address the zoning issue, which, as written in Sections 1 and 2, would effectively shutter both of our syringe programs immediately if it were to pass. So, deep concerns about that because the work that we have been doing for the past five years in this community has made a significant difference. And we have tried to be good neighbors. In all the years that we have been operational, we've not had a single complaint from the community. Now, if there have been complaints, I don't know where they're going, they are not coming to us. That said, we have a residential home in our backyard of our facility, and I know that my colleagues are in a similar situation. To contemplate relocation would be near impossible in the current environment with question marks around funding and what will come down from both the federal government and the state government. We have a well-established program that people know how to access, and it would be really challenging for us to pick up, find a new space, rent it, and all the time that it would take in between while the program would have to be shuttered before we could establish it again. The other thing that I would say to you is, we know the program is effective because we track data. And we have been collecting data from our Lewiston PD colleagues since the program's inception. And as you may know from reports from the state, drug overdose deaths went up, 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 up for many, many years, and at the end of 2024, we saw a 16.7% reduction in overdose deaths in the state of Maine. Here in Lewiston, a 28% reduction. That's almost one in three individuals whose lives have been saved as a result of the work that we are collectively doing in our harm reduction programs. And I cannot speak passionately enough to what that means to me as the mother of an adult son who died of an accidental fentanyl overdose and from what I see with the people that we work with every day. So I would strongly compel you to think about the work group that we are going to be starting under Mayor Shaleen's organization, and we would love to come to the table and talk with all of you about what we believe is best practice, some of the outcomes from the work that we have done over the years and what we think could be a nice resolution between public safety and high-quality care.
That's time, thank you.
Hello, my name is Dustin Lassard. I am a lifelong resident of Lewiston, born and raised. I am a grateful recovering addict. I've got 44 months clean and sober. And I can remember when I was in my addiction, there were times I was so messed up on drugs, like, I couldn't even dispose of the needle properly, I was so messed up on drugs. And today, that's the exact issue that we're all here for. I love Lewiston, and I'm sure you all do, too. I feel like this just needs some regulations and some adjustments. Lewiston is right in the middle of a revitalization, new apartment buildings, new housing, and I feel like this should be part of it as well, because it's just gotten out of hand. Our town is littered with hypodermic needles, and it doesn't seem to be getting any better. There just needs to be some regulations in place. I'm not against harm reduction or needle exchange, however, I do feel like, like I said, the city has gotten lax with the situation and it's gotten out of control. Something definitely needs to be done. Thank you.
I have a one page I'd like to hand out to council members. Do I hand that to you?
Aye.
It's not my testimony, it's just an infographic with some compelling info that I think you guys should see. I'll wait till you guys get it in front of you.
You can start.
Okay. Good evening, Counselors. Some of you on the council know me. For those that don't, my name is Rosie Boyce. I'm a harm reductionist, a lifelong resident of Lewiston, and I've worked very closely for the past decade with people who are actively using drugs. As the former Community Engagement and Outreach Coordinator at the Church of Safe Injection, I'm not only familiar with, but deeply invested in the harm reduction efforts taking place right here in Lewiston. I'm here tonight because this ordinance, as currently written, would undermine public health progress, create unnecessary barriers to care, and not only threaten to risk lives, but to undo all of the hard work that many of us present here tonight have done over the last several years. First, let's be clear. People use drugs for all sorts of valid reasons, but tonight isn't about why people use drugs, it's about what we choose to do as a community when people use, and how we can reduce harm for everyone involved. That's the entire community. This ordinance proposes to ban mobile syringe exchange programs, it enforces a one-for-one exchange model, and it limits the number of programs allowed in our city to just two. These restrictions are not solutions, they're setbacks. Fentanyl has an incredibly short half-life. The math is simple. Reduced effectiveness of the substance equals more frequent injections to avoid painful withdrawal. Limiting access leads to more incidence of reuse, more infections, and more improperly discarded syringes. When we restrict access, we increase suffering. The CDC explicitly states that syringe programs reduce HIV, hepatitis C, and syringe litter. They do not support a one-for-one model. Syringe service programs aren't the problem, they're part of the solution, and I truly believe that this city wants to be on the right side of history. Please vote no on this ordinance, and if there's space for a task force or a working group to explore better options, I would love to be a part of it. And with, I have a little bit of time left, which is shocking, actually. I thought I would go way over. One thing that I would like to say, just kind of ad lib here, is I know that one of the bigger issues in this city is syringe litter. Syringe service programs help reduce that. Without them, I would like for you to think about, like, how bad the problem would be if we weren't here at all. When we're talking about syringe litter, it's, education is the biggest, the biggest issue here. We're talking about a population of people that aren't able to care for themselves, right? You can't expect them to care about the community around them. That's where SSP programs and outreach workers come in. We bring education, we bring tools, we bring supplies that help, you know, alleviate the problem all the way around. So, the way that this ordinance is currently written does away with all of the good work that's already being done. And I've heard you already say that you are not happy with the current right.
That's time, thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
My name is Deborah York. I'm the Director of an Angels Wing. We are located in Lewiston. I am a homeowner in Lewiston as well. I had to take notes because this was sprung on me last minute, I apologize. An Angels Wing is not involved directly with syringe exchange service, but we do see the effects of contaminated needles and those that were fortunate enough not to use contaminated needles. We own recovery homes, we have a recovery center, and we have direct access to the results of those needles. We are on the side of recovery, and people come to us when they are ready to get well. Some have life-changing effects and disabilities from contaminated needles, Hep C, HIV, and infections. To summarize, eliminating or reducing harm reduction measures could have detrimental effects on public health, increased rates of overdose deaths, infectious disease, and reduced access to treatment. Other crucial services for people who use drugs. Individuals deserve services that promote health regardless of whether they use drugs or not. Evidence-based harm reduction strategies minimize negative consequences of drug use. We are willing to step up and find a solution that will help solve issues surrounding the syringe program. As a community organization in partnership with the City of Lewiston and Spurwink, we care how this is resolved and would hope that you please take this issue very seriously. Thank you.
Zoe Lidstrom, Ward 5. I'll make it brief because I'm not at all an expert on this issue, but I think speaking as just a citizen of Lewiston who tries to be compassionate is an important voice as well. I would just urge everyone on the council to remember that these people are our neighbors and friends, and they are sisters and brothers and parents and cousins. The issue of having to see a discarded needle on the street pales in comparison to the struggles that these people are going through. Please keep that in mind when drafting a better ordinance. Thank you.
My name is Ernestine Peralt, and I'm the Supervisor at Spurwink that oversees the community outreach programs. One of the programs happens to be the Harm Reduction Clinic located 1155 Lisbon Street. Many people are surprised that we have a clinic at 1155 Lisbon Street. It's been long known for being the place of Tri-County Mental Health Services, and then in the past year, we were adopted by Spurwink, so Spurwink services are there now as well. Our clinic is surrounded by an entire building, if you will, of programs, clinical support, administration, et cetera, that are there and available for anyone that actually does come in for our harm reduction services. They're accessible to them to be able to say, today's the day that I would like treatment, and we can certainly put those things into play pretty promptly. Majority of my team are out on the streets every day, and they pride themselves on being able to have the knowledge of where to get someone into treatment when someone says today's the day. And at 1155 Lisbon Street, we have that at our disposal for our harm reduction clients. People oftentimes deduct that harm reduction services is simply needle exchange. I want to list for you all of the other things that we're capable of doing and that we also are, give our clients every day accessible to. The first is recovery coaching. We have three staff that work full-time in our clinic, and they are all three recovery coaches. And so, that's oftentimes how people will start, is just getting someone who's lived experience that they would like to be able to talk with and share their struggles. Next is Hep C and HIV rapid testing. That's an important clinical process that we have there. We offer safe sex supplies, first aid supplies, hygiene supplies, wound care supplies, nutrition supplies, obviously, connections and referrals to treatment, mental health, medical substance use, as well as other community supports and services such as food stamps and main care, getting an identification, transportation, housing, you name it. All of those things are afforded there and the access to resources to achieve them. Brain injury screenings, because more than half of folks that overdose are at high risk for a brain injury, traumatic brain injury. So we do those screenings there at that clinic as well. And if I haven't mentioned it, we also do a syringe exchange. That's important to kind of know that, I list that last for a reason, because all of these other things are what people bring, you know, what they come in the door for, oftentimes first. So, there are many, many people who come to our clinic and do not have needles to exchange, and that's not their interest, but they'd like to participate in these other things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Paul Vinsel. I'm an addiction medicine physician with Spurwink and at the Family Medicine Residency at Central Maine Medical Center. I do not live in Lewiston, I live in West Bath, but I do all my work in Lewiston. I want to thank the council members, the discussion you had before the public comment, I thought was really good, and I'm not going to rehash all of the things that you guys have already talked about. But I do want to say that I feel that reducing needle waste is very important. I think that our parks, our streets belong to the public, and we need them to be able to use those safely. And I'm, I would like to be part of the solution to that, and I think most people here in the harm reduction and treatment programs would like to be part of the solution. But what I really wanted to talk about was a patient that I saw yesterday, because I think she is a real example of why harm reduction, syringe service programs are so important. This is a woman who I've been treating for a few years now. When I first started treatment with her, she was unhoused. She had given up the care of her children to someone else, and she was using drugs by injection. She got into treatment with us and pretty quickly after that, went to a residential program for about four weeks. And she came back and resumed treatment at our, well, Tri-County at that time, now it's Spurwink. She used IV, she had IV drug use for many years, but she used the syringe service programs. So though she had 60 emergency department visits due to substance use, that's what she told me, I haven't verified it, she never developed HIV, she never developed hepatitis C. Because she used new needles and didn't reuse them, she didn't have trauma due to her needle use. She's now more than three years abstinent. She's now more than three years abstinent. She works full-time as a manager at her retail place. She is taking care of her three children, and she's paying taxes. And every time I see her, uh, it's just the best part of my month. Thank you very much.
Jim Leisen again, uh, 26 Taylor Hill Road in Lewiston, Ward 1. Um, I'm not going to be repeating a lot of what you guys discussed or what some of these experts have to say. I'm just going to mention that, um, many families here in Maine have been affected by overdose, and even my family was affected. Samuel Johnson, rest in peace, my wife's nephew, had an overdose, and if he would have had, uh, resources necessary, he could stay, he would have stayed alive. But unfortunately, he died. So, uh, so sad. So, again, I, I agree that some of the zoning stuff should be looked at, but I do think that, that the suggestion of, of some of these groups meeting with, with, with Director Connor would be really, really important. Because these people know that, you know, I, I, I'm not an expert on, on, and I know about harm reduction. And I know harm reduction, you know, and, and I don't know why, it's a difficult image to kind of, um, put forward. Because people, when, when you're talking about ejecting needles and stuff, it, people's brains just shut down. You know, I, I, I've seen that at, at, in Augusta, uh, lobbying and whatever. Um, but I do think harm reduction is, is significantly important to this community. We gotta, we gotta make it easier for these people to exist. And it's us. It's not these people. It's us. It's our brothers, it's our sisters, it's, has been pointed out. So in any case, I'm just going to say that I'm glad that Director Connor, um, had the fortitude to say, hey, this isn't ready for consumption yet, because I, I agree with that. I think we need some, some amendments on a number of the items that you guys have discussed, some of the, uh, items that have been discussed by some of the people, so, thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Hi, good evening. Uh, Anne Seitz with Maine CDC. Nice to see you all again. I am the Director of the Infectious Disease Prevention Program at the Maine CDC at the Department of Health and Human Services. We oversee HIV, STIs, viral hepatitis, and harm reduction. We also coordinate on behalf of the center, um, the certification of syringe service programs. I'm glad to be back here with the council. Um, I did include a packet that, um, is available and also submitted a public comment. Um, I wanted to just provide some very brief comments. Um, Maine CDC believes the accessibility of SSPs can be realized while also addressing, uh, syringe waste in the community. Uh, restricting syringe access has been linked to poor community health outcomes, including infectious disease transmission, some of what we're seeing in Bangor, um, drug-related overdoses, and other health problems. Restricting syringe service programs does not mean that there will be fewer syringes in this community, um, that are improperly disposed. Um, other communities have adopted other effective strategies. This was a topic we discussed last time. There's information in your packet on this, particularly, um, effective alternative solutions to address syringe waste, such as Portland that has a syringe buyback program. They found a seventy-six percent reduction in syringe waste found in the community after they launched this program. And then similarly, Bangor has launched a syringe waste disposal program, working with a community partner to collect syringes. There are alternatives, and I would, um, just welcome the opportunity for Maine CDC to support the council to consider other opportunities to address syringe waste while continuing to support syringe service programs as they are now in Lewiston. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Nikki Butler. I'm a resident of Lewiston and the Director of Health and Peer Support at Maine Access Points in Sanford, a harm reduction overdose prevention organization. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to share with you the very real and concerning impacts we've observed, observed in Sanford following the implant, implantation of their one-for-one syringe ordinance on November twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four. I urge you to consider these outcomes carefully, because before moving forward with similar measures here in Lewiston, when we compare the six months prior to the ordinance with the six months following, we've seen a fourteen-point-five percent decrease in the number of service encounters, a thirty-six-point-four percent decrease in new participants enrolling in the program, a thirteen-point-four percent decrease in unique participants serve. These reductions do not reflect a decreased need, rather, they represent people being pushed away from lifesaving services. Our staff are frequently forced to turn away individuals, many of whom are first-time participants, simply because they do not have syringes to exchange. This leads to increased syringe sharing, escalating the risks of infections and the spread of communicable diseases within the community. We've also observed growing fear, distrust, and stigma, not just between program participants and staff, but across the broader community, creating an even more hostile environment for vulnerable individuals. We are already seeing a rise in infections and health complications due to the syringe reuse, all because access to clean supplies have been restricted. While this ordinance may have been well-intended, the unintended public health consequences have been significant and harmful. I strongly urge you to take these lessons from Sanford into account as you consider policies that will impact the health and safety of the, your Lewiston residents. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, and thank you for attention on this issue. Um, my name is Mitch DeGere. I live in Auburn, but I've been working in Lewiston, um, in the BHH system. I am, uh, what's called a Certified Intentional Peer Support Specialist. I wish I could do something about that title, but it's kind of long. But, uh, what that is, is, is I had, I went through my own mental illness as a young man, from sexual trauma, um, from depression and post-traumatic stress. And getting through that, you now, um, you get certified too, so that you make connections with people in the community that are now having kind of similar issues I did. So, uh, right now, I'm living a, a wonderful life, and, and I really appreciate everyone coming together. Um, I just wanted to share with you, I, I did share, I went to, I was in Augusta about two, two and a half years ago, and it was something that just kind of bothered me, and it kind of opened my eyes, that there was an actual bill that was put into the clerk's desk, you know, that, to remove critical race theory from high schools, and the information I had with, that wasn't being taught in any high school in Maine. And I kind of thought we were kind of in trouble, you know, that, like, to, to have something like that. And, and I think like, a part of the thing that kind of disturbed me, and, and again, this is kind of my experience with harm reduction, is like, when I heard the reading of this, it kind of felt like so harsh. You know, like a thousand feet, you know, like, like, and, and I'm not a zoning expert, you know? But, and, and I hadn't, even before this meeting, I said, how does that happen? You know, in a, in a, in a concentrated area? It, it seemed like it was impossible, and I, I forget what council, um, person brought that up, you know? And it seemed like, wow, you know, like, i- it just seems kind of harsh to even start out that way. But I appreciate kind of the back and forth, um, that, that's happening. And when I'm, when I'm sitting, uh, making connections with, with, whether it's homeless, or, or addicts, or those in, in a suicidal situation, that to remember that, you know, we're all born into a life, and we have to adapt to that life. And so, the people I work with, the trauma when they're growing up is sometimes off the charts and hard to listen to sometimes, but I had my own experience, and I think, I just hopefully like, like, if, if, not just our heads, but also our hearts. And that also, I still think too, the, I forget the gentleman who said, you know, it's a community. And how do communities live together? We do, like, ordinances, and we have regulations, and that's how we live together. But it has to be done with kindness, with patience, and that's what I'm hearing tonight. And that's what, uh, harm reduction is all about. Um, so, thank you, and, and hopefully, I encourage to continue this process. Thank you.
Hi, I am Heather Laterno, Ward 1. Um, I am also a lifelong resident of Lewiston, and I have been a downtown business owner for the past eighteen years. Um, I came here tonight not to speak against providing these important services to those that need it, but rather, uh, to just briefly share my experience, um, as a business owner in the neighborhood of, uh, an SSP, hopefully in an effort to improve the intersection of SSPs and the community. I think it is important to address this, uh, so that those of us that, I guess they also rely, um, but we rely on our patrons coming downtown, um, and we want to hope that they can continue to feel encouraged to visit us there. Um, in the last several years, um, we have never experienced more trouble with dirty syringes in the Middle Street neighborhood, nor have we ever made so many calls to dispatch, uh, for help for people who are actively doing drugs in our neighborhood. Uh, I do feel it is very important for the success of Lewiston small businesses that community members feel safe and confident to come to the downtown. I hope in this ordinance's revised version, uh, we can find a healthy balance, uh, for all the residents. Thanks.
All right, here we go. Good evening. Uh, my name is Evan Mancini. I live in Auburn and own and operate Mancini's Italian Deli at Five Park Street in downtown Lewiston. A councilman earlier asked for someone in the trenches. I am the next-door neighbor and have firsthand witness of their backyard on a day-to-day basis. I'm here tonight to share my perspective as a small business owner regarding the ordinances proposed and amendments put forth regarding the syringe service program. First, I want to sincerely thank the City Council and Mayor for the support you've shown me and other local businesses since we've opened our doors. I've personally seen Mayor Shalin, Councilor Scott Harriman, Josh Nijin, and many members of the Lewiston Police Department, like Officer Joe Philopon, regularly stopping by Mancini's and neighboring businesses like Blue Jay Cafe to check in. I'd also like to acknowledge SpurWink and their representatives, like Tom, who's somewhere around here, uh, whose continued presence downtown has helped small businesses like mine feel seen and supported. Let me be clear, I support the proper licensing and zoning of SSPs. The problem is not the effectiveness, it's the execution of some of the current ones in our city. I believe many of us in the downtown business community recognize the need of these services. However, it's vital that we approach their placement and oversight with care, not only to ensure the safety and dignity of those seeking help, but also to preserve the accessibility, cleanliness, and viability of downtown businesses, including restaurants, medical offices, and professional services. Since opening, we've had to contact Lewiston Police Department hundreds of times, and at a time, and at days, multiple times a day, for issues ranging from domestic disputes and open defecation to public drug use, alcohol consumption, loitering, and disorderly conduct. I've seen mothers pushing their strollers into busy lanes of Main Street to avoid unconscious individuals blocking the sidewalks as they try to access essential services located in our downtown. These issues are not abstract. They affect real people every single day. Our seniors, our veterans, many of whom are disabled, deserve a downtown they can access and safely feel comfortable. And yet, they often find themselves navigating through crowds and drug activities spilling out from our parks and public spaces. What should be a walkable city core has at times become a barrier. Like many downtown businesses, especially those in hospitality, we depend on steady foot traffic and a strong workforce. Unfortunately, the climate created by the syringe service programs has discouraged both. And the restaurant industry rely heavily on young talented students from Lewiston's excellent culinary programs like the Green Ladle. However, to our dismay, some parents reluctant to let their kids work downtown or even park nearby. Since the recent and unexplained closure of the SSP located next door, we've seen a clear and positive shift. Fewer incidents, cleaner streets, and an overall return to normalcy. It's important to acknowledge the shift is not coincidental. The closure of the Church of Safe Injection has had a direct impact on restoring safety and accessibility to Park Street. While other factors may play a small role, the correlation is too strong to ignore. I have further comments. I'll email, email them to you all later. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi, Wendy McPike. I'm an Auburn resident and own properties in Words 1, 3, 5, and 7. So this has been very helpful. I've, I've, I am on the side of harm reduction is important, is necessary. It's lifesaving, and I, I appreciate that you want to do more, gather more information, have more workshops. I think it's very important. Um, I appreciate the director's, um, also recognizing that. I'm also encouraged that the CDC was here, um, because that was part of my initial questions. I missed the meeting where they, where you guys have discussed that. I think that having, uh, more input from the people that are in the trenches, that are doing the harm reduction, that are running these programs already, um, as well as CDC having a chance to meet with the director, I think that is vital. Um, there's a lot of fear and, um, uh, misinformation on, a part of a lot of the public, understanding what addiction looks like, what it is, what it isn't, what, um, can happen with someone that is looking for harm reduction or for their journey to sobriety, um, and to not being in active addiction. And so I think the more that we can get this into the public's heads, I think it's going to help people. There's always going to be people that don't want to see any of this, and, because they don't understand. I also know it's not an easy issue. If it was, we wouldn't be here. Um, so, we're landlords, and we have dealt with, um, this issue a lot. Um, all of our properties are in the downtown, in the tree streets. Um, so we have had people in active addiction be tenants, um, people that were not and then were. Um, we've had bad addict, bad evictions, and have had to deal with what that looks like in an apartment on a clean-out. Um, we, since meeting some of these people in the, um, harm reduction, they have offered and have come to our apartments to help with cleanup when we're not sure, um, how many needles are in an apartment, and they have come with the knowledge and the know-how and the sharpest containers and have helped us clean that out. And we are more than thankful for that, um, because it is scary if you don't know what you're doing. But I, I appreciate this process. I appreciate hearing from all the people that know way more than me. Um, you know, we have had, had addiction in our family, and it's important to continue on the journey. So, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Galant, pleasure to see you.
Glad to be here. It's what a view. It's a little bit different from this side of the podium. Uh, Tim Galant, Ward 7, Councilor Galant.
One second, Councilor. Um, Madam Clerk, can you, uh, comment on, uh, on having a counselor speak during a public comment?
Uh, sure, if, um, it has been past practice, not common, but, uh, if a counselor has a item that they want to speak to personally regarding their personal experience, not as a counselor, but as a resident and as a person, um, they will speak from the podium so it is clear that they are speaking on behalf of themselves as opposed, uh, as in their council role.
All right. I- is that what you wish to do, Councilor Galant?
That is correct, Mayor.
Uh, you, you have three minutes, good sir.
Thank you very much. Again, Councilor Galant, Ward 7. I live in 533 Webster Street, and I too have lost a son to drug addiction. Um, and I really believe that this policy, like the policy we put together for homeless that you all did, and the city is, should be designed to help people in their problems and their addictions and what's going on, and not hinder their opportunity for recovery. Uh, I've, ten-plus years ago when I lost my son, there were no real good harm reduction systems out there. I went and obtained a degree in drug and alcohol addictions, University of Maine Augusta, because I thought, I, I should have seen something and known something, or I could have prevented it. And that's not what happens. Unfortunately, most people in the public, including myself back then, just thought that people who did this, you know, should grow up. It's like people who are alcoholics. They should be able to stop the drink. And it doesn't work that way. So I, I hope that whatever's developed from the city and the ordinance, and that we go forth with this, that we go forth with the idea of trying to help our fellow citizens and not hinder their ability to be able to get services and the things that they need, uh, to help them on their, their path of success. I know many success stories. I work out here in the community with a lot of these people and have seen them. And yes, sometimes it takes ten, fifteen, sixteen, a hundred times to get services, but every time they go in, someone says, hey, would you like help? Hey, can we do something for you? These are things that weren't offered to my son because they weren't available. So I believe that these things are extremely important to be offered in our community, and, and yes, monitored. I, I don't think that you'd And yes, monitored, I don't think that you'd have free rein. Thank you guys very much. I'll return to my seat now.
Thank you, Tim. Further public comments?
Matt Roy, Ward 3. We hear the phrase "harm reduction" a lot, but the harm reduction we hear about is of a segment of the population, not the harm reduction to the 99, the other 99% of the population. It is far, I would agree, it's far more cost-effective for harm reduction programs, but at the same, that should be measured against a lifetime of dealing with AIDS, HIV, the various forms of hepatitis and other communicable diseases you can get from a dirty needle. Some regulation is point, well, then we have the irony, as Counselor Nagin has been quoted as saying, that 99% of what was said at the second workshop on this ordinance had nothing to do with the ordinance itself. It was a, apologies to those who spoke at that, but it was a smoke and mirror. There is, the words "data and statistics" were bandied about like candy with no actual presentation of the data. Yeah, thank you.
Further public comment? Public comment is now closed. Appreciate all of you for speaking. Many of you are on the front lines of the opioid crisis here in Lewiston and Maine, and I appreciate your service. Counselor Sol.
First, I would just like to thank everyone for being here, being vulnerable. You shared some pretty great stories with us, and so I appreciate that. I also want to just clarify that in the ordinance where it says one-to-one, I know a lot of folks are thinking that it means that we're just going to limit you to one a day. If you bring five, in my opinion, you get five. Like, that's the goal. And as far as the program, I don't think any of us are looking to shut your programs down where they are in our downtown. That is probably, that needs to change. My issue is, I heard one person say this in a public comment, we have a small group, we have a group of individuals that are using, and then we have a city of almost 39,000 people who just seem to keep being put on the back burner. And so that has to stop as well. We have to include everybody. It can't just be about the individuals in the program. I guess my, what's the end game? You know, so if it's, if you don't want us to go back to one-to-one, but then we expect someone who just used a needle to go find a proper place to dispose of it, what, where's the, where's the middle ground? You know, it's been, what, five years that this program has been operating? And I've never seen anybody go out and say, "Hey, we've got to do something about this" until the council brought it up. So at this point, I think it is up to the council to make sure that the entire city is protected, however that looks. I don't want it to continue to be expected to just normalize this behavior and what's happening because it's not normal. It's creating dangerous situations in our city. The one-to-one, I think, will reduce needle litter if they have to bring a needle back with them. And from what I understand, when you enter into the program, you're given, I think, was it 10 needles? So that starts you with needles to bring back. There has to be some accountability. It can't always be just up to the public. The public shouldn't have to be the ones that have to go out and clean these syringes up. So, yeah. So that's where I'm going to leave it for now. Thanks.
Counselor Roy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to say thank you for everybody that took the courage to get up there and speak and share your stories. It takes a lot out of you to do that, and I know I've spoken at the podium before, and it's really tough. One of the things I wanted to say is, it seems to me like there was a common talking point, which is having the CDC and professionals sit at the table with Director Connor. I think if we do that, it's going to provide a good ordinance that takes into consideration both harm reduction and safety of our residents. Okay? Because that's very important. Because again, like Counselor Sol just said, we've got 1%, we've got 99%. It's our job here on this podium to make sure that we take into consideration everybody, not just 1% or the 99. It's 100%. So with that being said, the good neighbor policy goes a long way. I do know when we were here for a workshop a couple of weeks ago, there were a couple of great ideas, maybe like some personalized lock boxes for syringe stuff. I mean, there are a lot of things that we can bring to the table and come up with a good ordinance. And I feel with the professionals in this room, with the director, with the team that we have at the city, we can come up and make some really good ordinances that include everybody. And I really appreciate everybody's time.
Counselor Nagin?
So first and foremost, I want to thank everybody who came out to speak tonight. I greatly appreciate you taking the time to share your experiences, your opinions. I certainly am not not hearing those. I'd also like to state that, you know, several folks that have either written in or commented tonight are from Freeport, Brunswick, Kennybunk, West Bath, Wyndham, Auburn, and beyond, all of which are communities that do not have SSPs located within them. And so I appreciate absolutely the opinion of how our businesses and service providers should work together. Well, the thing is, we haven't actually had that discussion, right? We haven't had the discussion about how our businesses and service providers work together. But there is a lot of need for us as elected officials to answer our constituencies and to resolve conflict, and that's what part of this is. So I would say, first and foremost, I have no interest personally in restricting any part of a policy that is best practices for the CDC, for the main CDC. Ultimately, I was at one point in time somewhat objectionable to the idea of a mobile clinic. I can say at this point, I would be comfortable licensing mobile clinics. I do believe that we should be permitting their activity when it occurs so that we do not get incongruous uses. Ultimately, we do not want Shakespeare in the Park while we also have a needle exchange happening. These are things that are incongruous and incompatible. I also believe in meeting people where they're at. Since there are two service providers in the entire county, and they're both located within Lewiston, it would be great to see one of these service providers bringing a mobile clinic to, I don't know, let's say, Green, Wales, another community that needs these services, where people are currently seeking here. I would also say that the privacy rights and human dignity of those who are experiencing issues with SUD are also incredibly important. There needs to be protections around the way in which they're currently being exposed in the public. There is a huge challenge with behaviors. It's not conditions, it's behaviors. And those behaviors do carry stigma, and it's not possible to easily remove those stigmas. And so this is something also that we need to be thinking about. I would also support reducing some of the barriers, the buffers around residential and other business uses. I do think it's, we're talking about residential businesses, I'd rather be talking about residential units. A lot of times, we don't seem to care about people who live in apartment buildings, but at the same time, I think it's, especially if they're mixed use. I think these folks also deserve some rights that I have as an individual homeowner. A good neighbor policy, I think, is absolutely necessary at this point in order to help resolve some of these conflicts. I don't necessarily think that the city is going to be the best partner in writing those policies. I think maybe we could set minimum standards and look for our SSPs to write the policies, and that would be helpful. And, you know, ultimately, the challenge that we're experiencing with the needle litter, I think is, you know, the one-to-one exchange was thought of as a way to possibly answer some of that. I don't believe it is after hearing all the testimony concerning the many-to-one exchange. I think that we need to have a public health policy around how we handle our needle waste. It is definitely an effect of drug use in our community, and I'm sure that having access to needles may increase some of that litter, but I would also say that having access to needles is also reducing the cases of bloodborne diseases and infections. And so there has to be a better solution, and it can't necessarily come from the taxpayers' backs. And so, especially when we're talking about being a regional service provider for these types of services. I think we can work through a lot of these pieces. I do believe that the CDC can absolutely weigh in on some of these pieces as far as it affects public health policy, but zoning and the way that we support our business districts and our residents is not the purview of the CDC. That is the purview of the municipal government. And so, you know, there are discussions we can have about what's going to be limited and why, but at the end of the day, if we say we want a 200-foot buffer from a school zone, and I would also extend this, active drug users, if they're going into spaces that there's a federal penalty for being within 1,000 feet of a particular, you know, playgrounds and schools, possibly that's not the best place for an SSP. Just to point that out. So there are federal laws that you also need to think about, that at the end of the day, we're not being the restrictors on. But we could either break this entire ordinance down piece by piece, or we could decide to meet later on this. I would love to see a workshop on this, honestly. That's the way I would like to go before we could do a first and second reading. Thank you all for listening.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. Yeah, similar to what Counselor Nagin said, I think the city's role here is common sense zoning and business licensing. It's not to get into the clinical aspects of how SSPs operate. The issues that constituents have been bringing forward to me have been primarily syringe litter, which this ordinance does not address, and to a lesser extent, some of the behaviors of people who are utilizing SSP services and in the vicinity of those SSPs. And I think those are things that, at least the zoning pieces and the licensing are things that we can accomplish here at the city. When it comes to mobile exchanges, I feel like, in a similar way, if we license and zone them appropriately, that could actually potentially reduce some of the conflict with some of the other uses in the neighborhoods because they would have the flexibility to go to a certain place that's a little bit out of the way, and they're not necessarily tied to one brick-and-mortar building. But I would like to know, you know, I would like to set parameters around where they could operate, and I would want to know when they're operating, just so there aren't conflicting uses. And then I just wanted to remind everyone, there were a couple of comments that seemed like, they seemed to imply that harm reduction was only for people who were, who are using drugs, and harm reduction really benefits the entire community. Because in the event that a used syringe does end up on the ground, I'd much rather that be a syringe from someone who does not have a communicable disease than someone who does. And any other point of exposure that someone might have with somebody who uses drugs where they may be exposed to a disease that that person has, if they don't have the disease in the first place, they're not going to be spreading it around. So I think there's a lot of room for improvement to this current ordinance, and I think that we're headed in a good direction and we're in a cooperative space here where we can really get something positive accomplished.
I want to recognize your, Counselor Chinam, but Counselor Roy, did you have a quick clarifying comment from your previous comments?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to steal a phrase really quickly, LD 1738 is a critical step towards, step forward. This bill creates statewide biohazard waste disposal program. The grant program will give municipalities and syringe service programs the resources to expand cleanup efforts, install safe disposal infrastructure, and keep our public spaces free from syringe litter. So please tell your state representatives to back that bill.
Yes, Counselor Chinam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's been some excellent testimony tonight. We've heard from both sides of this issue. I'd like to remind my fellow counselors and the public at large that this entire discussion was born of a concern about needle litter. It has exploded into a discussion concerning syringe service providers toward harm reduction. And I agree with Counselor Nagin that this is not the purview of the city of Lewiston. There are experts at the state level and experts locally who know far more about the operation of SSPs than we as a city do. I'm not opposed at all to licensing, although I think the licensing needs to be done with as light a hand as possible. My stated intention earlier was that we have as much discussion as we can tonight to give Counselor, I'm sorry, to give Director, Counselor, Director Connor, some direction in the crafting of revisions to this draft ordinance. To that end, I've heard that the mayor is assembling a task force, if you will, of knowledgeable people from various aspects of the whole harm reduction area. I would like to hear from them. I would like to have the testimony that was presented to us orally as well as written. We received five, six, seven emails in a deluge this afternoon, none of which were encouraging us to come down on SSPs with a heavy hand. This ordinance needs a lot of work. I don't know that we're going to accomplish that tonight, but I would like to clarify for the director that the council is in agreement that limiting exchange service providers in Lewiston to a one-for-one exchange is not an appropriate measure. Can we get a hands-up or a hands-down, a thumbs-up on that, Mr. Mayor? I'm not quite sure how we do that outside workshop, but I would like to give Director Connor some direction on that. I would like to give him some direction on the mobile units that we've discussed about earlier tonight, and I would like to give direction on the limitation of two SSPs in the city. And I'm not quite sure how to manage that, but my opinion is that we do not need to restrict one-for-one. We do not need to limit or prohibit mobile uses, and we do not need to limit SSPs in Lewiston to any number, let alone two. As far as the zoning component is concerned, I think the zoning that's been proposed in this ordinance is overly restrictive, but I agree with Counselor Nagin that an element of location of SSPs needs to be considered at the local level. Mr. Mayor, I don't know how we get a consensus from council on those four major issues.
Thank you, Counselor Chinam. So if I may, counselors, so appreciate the discussion we've had thus far. It's 8:47, and we still have quite a bit of meeting ahead of us. And then I've heard from counselors that perhaps we need to head back and turn this into a workshop. We may want to have Director Connor meet with recovery professionals from the CDC. What is, what are our thoughts on that? Let's start with that question first. Would we like Director Connor to meet with experts and professionals? Counselor Glant?
Not to interject, Mr. Mayor, but we have a motion on the table, and the discussion needs to be driven by the motion on the first reading and then comments. I think we, again, have the cart in front of the horse. We can check with the city clerk on how this should work, but we can't be doing thumbs-up and things like that. up and things like that, I don't believe is appropriate, other than a workshop or a situation. I think we need to vote on what's on the table, and if it gets voted down, then we can talk about having a workshop and moving forward. That's my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Counselor Najin?
So, first and foremost, I do want to thank Rinseul for putting this on the agenda. I honestly do believe that this issue would not have moved forward if it wasn't a first reading, and I just want to be clear on that. And so, I greatly appreciate you taking the effort to put it forward. I do realize this is an incredibly clunky way in which to do this. So, but the discussion has to be public, so this is where we're at. The, any of the thumbs up, thumbs down things, or what we're going to direct anybody to do can be discussed in a workshop, in my opinion, followed by the first and second reading of the, of the ordinance. And I would be really hopeful that we could get that in place before September, because the constituency that I serve demands some sort of action quickly. And so, I think we have a lot of information in front of us. I think with the task force that has been mentioned by the mayor, they can certainly give feedback. I don't necessarily think it's, it's required that the CDC helps us craft our business and zoning license ordinances. And so, that's just my opinion, but perhaps as soon as we're done with this round, we can move the question.
Thank you, Counselor Najin. Yes, Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. So another option that we have, where this came forward in, in what I consider, in my experience, to be kind of an unusual order of operations, I guess, is we could table this ordinance, or table this, this agenda item until we have a workshop, until we have some revisions to this ordinance that satisfy what the council's looking for. So that, that's one other option that we have here.
So I have, hearing all of you, I think I have a proposal here. So, yes, perhaps we could table it this time. We could have professionals reach out to John Connor, and John Connor could, sorry, Director Connor, I apologize, Director Connor, reach out to professionals as he sees fits, and then, and then work with administration to schedule a workshop. Does that sound amenable to the council? Counselor Chinam?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In fact, I appreciate Counselor Harriman's suggestion. I don't want to table this. I would move to continue the discussion on a first reading of this ordinance until such time as we have held a workshop, and Director Connor has received guidance on how to reformulate the draft that's before us. That's, that's a formal motion to continue this until, until that specific condition is met.
Do we have a second for this motion?
I would second it predicated on the, on the requirement that with, if staff is comfortable with the ordinance provisions, that we could do it at the next council meeting, which is a month from now. And that would require us to schedule a workshop outside of our regular meetings. And so, I just want to put that out. But that would be my preference, and, and, so I second if. You'd have to approve that.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're, I'll have...
I would second the motion as presented.
Yeah, so we, we have a motion on the table. Do we have, do we have a second, Counselor Najin?
Not as presented.
Okay. Counselor Harriman?
I would second it as presented.
We now have a motion on the floor that has been seconded. Discussion on the merits of continuing before we go to a vote. Counselor Sol?
I'm not really sure what motion we're on right now, but if it does have to be moved to another date, I just would like that we get that date as soon as possible, like the next workshop available, like next Tuesday, a Thursday. And I know everybody is very busy, and I apologize, but I think this is just really important, and I don't, I don't want it to continue to go every two weeks, or it's going to be every month now. So I'm okay with that, but I definitely want to make sure we get that scheduled.
Thank you. Counselor Glant, yes?
I agree with Counselor Erden over here, but I think we need to give Director Connor enough time to gather the information. So he may not, within two weeks, be able to meet with the appropriate parties. I think he really needs to be able to get back to us and say, okay, I've got some really great feedback, I heard what you all said at this meeting, and, and go from there, quite frankly. So I would like to see it done soon as later, and I don't have a problem with meeting out of cycle, personally, whatever it takes to get it done, but I want to make sure he has enough time to get through what he has to do, so we get the answers we need.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Administrator Kane Ra.
Yeah, just two quick points. One, you know, needing information, just please get us, you know, specifically what information you're looking for. I think we've already done quite a bit of research and devoted a lot of time to this, but if, if there are specific points of information we're looking for, please get that into staff so we can be clear on what we're looking for. And just the other point, looking at the process, obviously, counselors are welcome to offer amendments through the process also, as we moved the first reading and beyond, for things you'd like to see here on the floor in public. It doesn't all need to be done sort of at a workshop or at the staff level, kind of behind the scenes, but the amendment process is obviously there for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments, Counselor Chinam, yes?
Thank you. The motion on the table is to continue until certain specific conditions have been met. And I think we agree that that be done with all deliberate haste, but I don't believe that we're in a position now to put a date certain on this. We've established what the conditions are that we'll bring this back for discussion before the council. So that's, that's the item that we're voting on.
Understood, Counselor Chinam. Yes, Counselor Najin?
I don't believe that if we don't set a date certain, that my house will be still, still standing. There, there are pressures from some of my constituents to have a timeframe. So I understand what you're saying. I would appreciate that we pick a date and, and set a condition that if that condition is not met, then the date has to move. And that date, I would suggest, would be the next council meeting. But whatever, whatever the majority votes is what we do, I guess.
Well, we have, we have a motion, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Counselor Najin. So we have a motion on the floor, so we're going to vote on that in a second. In terms of scheduling, I think we should allow staff to work with Director, sorry, administration to work with Director Connor to figure out when the next workshop should be. I am, I understand there can't be artificial delay, right? And so, we just can't, like in the movie Nemo, be a, Finding Nemo, be a delay fish. But at the same time, we have our summer schedule set for a reason, so staff and counselors can plan, so I'm kind of loathe to have meetings outside of that, but, you know, I would say let's handle that conversation between administration, Director Connor, and all of us at a future time to, to figure that out. At this point, I think we should vote, but Counselor Harriman, did you have a final thought?
I just wanted to offer that I think everyone up here wants to get this done, you know, as quickly as possible, but also not rushing so that we overlook things or produce a poor quality product in the end. So I, I think that our next meeting is set for July 17th, I believe it is. And, yeah, I think that, that, that we will likely take up this issue at that meeting, and, and I think that we're all, we're all looking to do the right thing here, and I, I don't know that we need to set an exact date, because I think we're on the same page.
Mr. Mayor?
I agree that we're all proceeding in good faith. Yes, Madam Clerk.
Because to clarify for the benefit of the public, the next meeting is July 15th. We don't want folks to show up on that Thursday. Thank you.
Our meetings remain on Tuesday, yes. Thank you. Seeing no further comment. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, just for clarification, the motion before you is to continue the public hearing until after a workshop is held to review and discuss proposed ordinance revisions. Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
No.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by the six to one.
Thank you very much, Director Connor. Thank you, members of the public. And we'll allow a second here for people to clear out and make their way home if they so choose to, and then we will continue on with the meeting. Perhaps we're going to take a brief recess, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.[1201.58]
Hello, thank you, we're back, if we can have it quiet in the council chambers, that'd be great. If you have a conversation, please take it outside, thank you. Madam Clerk, what item number are we on?
Item number four.
Oh wow, four, okay, we're up to four.
Item number four, amendment to the city zoning map to change a portion of 277 River Road and all of 287 River Road from the rural agricultural zone to the industrial zone. Requested action, the proposed amendment to rezone the front of 277 River Road and all of 287 River Road from rural agricultural to industrial, received first passage by a roll call vote, and to continue the public hearing for final passage to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Madam motion, please.
So moved, second.
Counselor Glant, second by Counselor Chidham, possibly. Director Connor, please kick us off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, so the, the planning board recently approved, gave a recommendation with a seven oh vote. Mr. Langley has owned these two properties, it's unique in that one side of the property and all along the river is industrial, and then you come to his property that is rural agricultural, and he has a petition to change it to industrial, so that he can, you know, build some industrial complex there. He's here with us today to speak to any questions that you may have, and we're really looking forward to what he's going to do down there, so, any questions, please feel free.
Yes, Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Langley, thank you for being here, you are apparently 277 River Road LLC as well as 287 River Road LLC.
Correct.
You have two different mailing addresses for those two different limited liability corporations.
Correct.
Interesting, okay, now I know, I can put a face to those. I have no objection to this however, whatsoever, however, I do note that our zoning map and perhaps our zoning ordinance could also stand a little bit of correction in that the residential A zone appears to front 289, is it, River Road, as well as the parcels that you're talking about, there is a very thin strip of residential A, and this shows up both on the zoning map, which I believe is the official document defining the, the zone areas, so if we could clean that up and eliminate the frontage of, and I'm sorry, I do not have the, the lot number written down, it was on my computer, but it's the next door neighbor to, toward the landfill, that frontage appears to be RA, and I think the intent here is to make it all industrial.
I'm also the owner of 289 River Road LLC.
Oh, a different LLC, oh cool, alright.
That's one.
That's a man with many hats, so, I would, I would ask that the frontage on those two parcels be changed from residential A to industrial as well, and in fact, if that's a, an amendment that's required, I, I so make it.
I will have to double check to see if we have to go back to the planning board for that, for that portion, but I don't know.
Boy, I can't imagine that we want, that we want to go through all of that bureaucracy for what is obviously a, a mapping issue. I, I have every confidence that if the planning board voted seven zero to allow the rezoning of these residential A into industrial, they would have no objection to this apparently five foot wide strip in front of the parcels.
Thank you, Counselor Chidham, Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor, if it ended up in front of the planning board, would that stop any of your future plans?
Could slow it down.
Thank you.
Counselor Najin.
I'm just slightly confused as to what we're talking about at this moment, so, there's a five foot section of NCA in front of this zone, or is this just a mistake on the, on the actual mapping layer on your computer?
Are we easily able to pull up a map, Director Connor?
I was not prepared to do that, I would have to call.
We're, yeah, it's like, if we're not easily able, we're not.
Mr. Mayor.
One second, Counselor Chidham, Counselor Najin, did you have anything further?
I'm just trying to get clarification on exactly where we're, I would, I would say that we accept the, oh, you have a map.
You have a map in your packet as well, as well as Counselor Najin, Counselor Harriman, Counselor Roy, Counselor Sol, and Counselor Glant, and that map shows a very narrow strip in front of 289, as well as in front of 277 and 278. I've taken the liberty of blowing up the official map on the city GIS website, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, the map is what determines the zone boundaries, is that correct?
That is my understanding, but actually, I'm going to defer to Director Connor on that, I, I don't oversee the land use code, his department does.
I'm sorry, I, I may have asked the wrong person.
I, I honestly do not know, and I, that's why I wanted to, to, to go back and talk to them, but I can't see them not, if it's just a mapping error, we tell all of our, you know, residents that come to us, the map may not be exactly spot on, if there are any land disputes, you are encouraged to hire a land surveyor to come out and, and get the actual boundaries.
Yes.
So this very well may be just a, a GIS map issue.
I, I do believe that the map is the official document that defines the zone boundaries, so, I, I will, I will put that out as, as a, I will posit that for purposes of this hypothetical, that map does show a very skinny little, and I think it results from the fact that typically the center line of a road is considered a zone boundary, and when the current industrial incursion between the two sections of residential A was created, that center line of road was retained, and the, only the parcel itself, so that the, the thin strip between these two is actually half of the pavement, half of the roadway, half of the right of way width, which would make it typically 25 or 33 feet, it needs to be cleaned up, so I, I've made the motion that we include that in industrial. That would need a second.
Understood, Counselor Chidham, do we have a, do we have a second for that at this time?
Our seconds would move forward.
I, I guess we have a second for that amendment, before we, it could also move forward without a second, but, yeah, before we, I guess I want to quickly ascertain, so, if we vote and pass on this amendment, will it need to go back to the planning board? Do we, do we know?
I don't know that answer if it'll have to go back, it doesn't sound like it would have to, but I want to make sure, and look through the zoning ordinances to make sure that it doesn't require that.
Right, understood, Counselor, Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if this does have to go back, I certainly don't want to delay any of Mr. Langley's projects, but if it, if it does have to go back to the planning board, the project's going to be delayed anyway because there is a residential A zone in front of an industrial zone parcel, so that would be an impediment to any development that he wants, I'm trying to remove that impediment now, and I'm hoping that the city council, how do I say this, I'm hoping the city council has the final authority on what the zoning boundaries are, but it may well be that the planning board has to make a recommendation to the council, which is then free to accept or reject that recommendation.
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you, I just want to clarify that the RA zone is rural agricultural, it's not residential A, so I don't know if that changes anything, but, as far as the, the overall agenda item, I'm totally in favor, I, I don't think there's, I don't see any reason to, to not grant this change, the whole area is, is fairly similar in, in use, and I just don't want to hold up Mr. Langley's plans, so, whatever the most efficient and quickest way we can do this is, that's what I'm for.
Counselor Najin.
Just really briefly to put this to bed so we can move this forward, on your layering, you show split zoned properties, right? Is it split zoned, because if it's not?
This is split zoned.
Is it triple split zoned, have we ever had such a thing?
I don't know if we've ever had such a thing, but this is currently split in two, but I don't know if they picked up on the little sliver at, at the planning board, I, I honestly don't think that was picked up.
So could we possibly just move to approve it, and if it's required that the planning board gives some type of feedback, we, we move it pending feedback from the, the planning board, so it doesn't have to come back to us?
Correct, we could reach out to the chair of the planning, of the planning board for that in the interim.
Madam Clerk, when does the, do we know when the planning board meets next?
I'm going to have to defer to council.
They're not, they don't meet again until July, July 16th, I think, 16th.
Clarifying point?
Go ahead, Mr. Langley, we're happy you're here.
I own 289 River Road and 299 River Road, and we rezoned it industrial back in 2021, and the application at that time was for 100% of those properties, so, I guess, to me, it seems like a mapping error I was unaware of, so the land in front of 289 and 299, the intent was, and the approval at that time was for 100% rezoning to industrial for those two, so I'm hoping that might help give a little more context, and I think it's hopefully just a layer issue.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, this is only first passage tonight, final passage would be scheduled for July 15th, and so it appears, looking at the map, that this five foot strip is 2% of the property or whatever, certainly not substantial change, that if in the meantime, if you were to approve first passage tonight, then Counselor Connor could check with the planning board even just informally, just to sort of get their read on it, and then we have to come back on the 15th anyway for final passage, and could incorporate that change at that time for final passage, and that would be allowable because it's not a substantial change between first passage and final passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, so are, sorry, just for clarification, are you saying that we should be voting on this amendment now, or we could vote on it later?
I think the suggestion would be to vote on it later, to possibly have the amendment withdrawn, if the makers of the motion of the amendment are agreeable to that, we'll just approve it as proposed, because we really don't know at this point if it's a mapping error or really, you know, exists that strip, and then that would allow time for some clarification, but to still let the project basically move forward to, to assist the property owner.
Counselor Chidham, how do you feel about this?
How do I feel about it? I, I feel very much that I rely on our city clerk to give us excellent advice, and I, I withdraw the motion because if we can make this change at second reading, which we have to have anyway, and in the interim can consult with Chairman Beeson of the planning board, that's the way to do it, so I withdraw the amendment.
Thank you, and it's now Chairwoman Cox is the chairperson of the planning board.
Chair Cox, I stand corrected.
Alright, we are now back to the, if that's also amenable to you, Counselor Glant?
Yes, that's what I was waiting for.
Okay, alright, we, we're now back to the main motion, we're now going to public comment at this time for this agenda item, we're coming back to the council, final thoughts from any of us, or you, Mr. Langley, or Director Connor, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number five.
Item number five, amendments to the personnel policies to add language regarding professionalism in the workplace, requested action to approve the proposed amendments to the personnel policies adding language regarding professionalism and respect in the workplace.
Sorry, one, one, one second, before I take a motion, did someone forget their phone here? Oh, okay, alright.
He'll be back.
He'll be back, he'll be right there.
Oh, okay.
He's coming up to get it.
Madam motion, please.
You may have a motion now.
Counselor Chidham, seconded by Counselor Harriman, Director Terrio, please kick us off.
Good evening, Heather Terrio, HR Director, really, I'm looking to adopt the clarifying language into the personnel policies on professionalism into the workplace, I would say that the city already had an expectation of being professional in the workplace, but at this point, I feel that the language needs to be direct within the personnel policies.
Is the person that inspired this agenda item present in the room?
It was not one individual. It was a generic modification.
I, I see, I see, yes, Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, I'm sorry we have to put this in our workplace guidelines, but if it has to be in there, it does, I would, I would suggest that we change the first word of the second paragraph from "the" to "each," each department in consultation with human resources is needed.
Anything further, Counselor?
Well, I, I guess that would have to be a formal amendment, so I'd need a second.
Would that be a friendly amendment?
Right, second.
Okay, well, Counselor Harriman, did you?
Yes, I'm fine with that if staff is.
Okay, excellent, Counselor Najin.
You're comfortable with changing it to "each" as opposed to "the"?
Yes, that's fine.
Counselor Harriman.
So, thank you, Director Terrio, I wondered if this, I, I realize that we voted down a social media policy a few months ago, and I wonder, does this also cover online behavior, or is it really just in the workplace, and would that have to be another policy that might be brought forward later?
It would be workplace guidelines, the, the social media policy would be separate.
Okay, yeah, no problem, thank you.
Public comment for this agenda item, back to the council, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, item number six.
Item number six, amendments to the personnel policies to clarify the language on the health insurance coverage waiver, requested action to approve the proposed amendments to the personnel policies adding clarifying language to the health insurance coverage waiver section.
Madam motion, please.
So moved.
Counselor Chidham followed by Counselor Najin, that was you?
I definitely said something.
Go on, oh, okay. Counselor Glant, seconded by Counselor Najin, thank you, Director Terrio.
So again, I'm coming forward with more clarifying language, so this is to really lay out for employees exactly when they're eligible for the health incentive, we have always prorated it based upon like when an employee starts, so if an employee starts in say May, we're not going to pay them the full 12 months, but this is to really nail down that language so that they have it in clear, clarifying language.
Thank you, discussion among the council, public comment, back to the council, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Director Terrio, item number seven.
Item number seven, amendments to the traffic schedule to remove parking meters and replace them with free time limited parking, requested action to approve amendments to the following sections of the traffic schedule to remove all parking meters and replace them with free time limited parking, all odd numbered side of Lisbon Street from Chestnut to Main Street for 30 minutes, all even numbered side of Lisbon Street from Maple to Main Street one hour, all of Canal Street two hours, all of Park Street two hours, aside from a few spots in front of City Hall for one hour, and in front of Park Pine for 15 minutes, Cedar and Lincoln Street permitted lots, two hour, 15 parking spaces, change loading zone on Main Street to 30 minute parking, change loading zone on Ash Street to two hour parking, change one parking meter timed space on Park Street to 30 minute parking, and change one parking meter timed space on Middle Street to 30 minute parking.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Counselor Chidham, seconded by Counselor Harriman, Chief St. Pierre, thank you so much for being here, and I'm sorry, your name?
Sergeant Joey Brown.
Oh, that's right, thank you, Sergeant, please kick us off.
Sure, so part of this amendment, traffic amendment, really is to, to eliminate our current meters, parking meters, that are very antiquated, they take quarters, dimes, and nickels, I'm surprised they don't take pennies, that's how old they are, so we're looking to improve our parking, and, and I'll probably lean on the Director of Economic Development to perhaps help me in this endeavor, he's been reaching out to businesses, that we've been holding several meetings, we're only one part of the equation as the police in terms of recommending or, you know, passage of this to make some changes that we think are needed in the business community and the business district. Again, our, our meters were very antiquated, so what we're trying to do is provide ample parking for all the customers, what I'm told by economic development is that the overwhelming sentiment of our business community is that we need better parking, more structured parking, I guess, in these cases, we have some that were metered, now they're one hour parking, as mentioned, some of them are two hour parking, and some of them are merely 15 minute parking, which would allow parking to just continue to, I guess, overlap, for a better word of saying, so that more people can park and, and do their services, whatever those services might be, whether they're dining for two hours at a local restaurant, or they're just running in somewhere for a 15 minute stint to pick up medications or whatnot, those are the reasons, I don't know if I hit that on the head.
Excellent, anything you'd like to say, Director Libby? Okay, thank you, yes, questions, comments? Yes, questions, comments from the council? Counselor Chinam?
Thank you. First of all, kudos to Lieutenant Conley. Going through this parking schedule is a nightmare. I spent way more time on it than I wanted to, and I didn't get finished. But I did note that for another consideration, section 49 of the parking schedule appears now to be obsolete. That's not addressed in here, so if you could look at that at some point and bring it back to us for removing that, I don't want to amend it here. I also want to note that people more knowledgeable than I about parking meters have suggested that we remove these in a phased approach. And that we start by removing meters on Canal and Lincoln and Middle Street first, and we leave the other meters up for an indeterminate time. Part of that is because enforcement is going to be a little more problematic. I know that the initial draft of this called for 15 minute parking on the west side of Lisbon Street, and I've walked Lisbon Street from Chestnut to Main, and I can't do it in 15 minutes, not when I'm marking tires. So it's impossible. I'm glad to see that that's been changed to 30 minutes. It makes a lot more sense to me. I guess my main point is, take a look at section 49 in the parking schedule because I think that now is obsolete. Thank you.
Counselor Herriman?
Thank you. Thank you both for being here. So first, I'm totally in support of this. I think it will really help our downtown businesses and as well as their customers. I do notice that in the next agenda item, there's a memo that speaks to it a little bit about enforcement, and I'm a little concerned about the capacity of enforcement. And I know it mentions in the next one that there might be additional, an additional full-time position there that could be added. I don't know if that will still be enough. I guess we can try it out and see, but changing the, changing the parking over to have a lot more shorter, shorter period spaces, it's going to require more attention, you know, going back there more often. And I'm just concerned that we don't have enough capacity to do it. But I can certainly wait and see how things play out and if things need to be adjusted.
That's the next agenda item, right?
It was in a memo in the next agenda item.
Okay, we will tackle it then. Counselor Nagin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, thank you both for being here tonight. I understand that the department is on, has a little bit of pressure going on tonight. And so appreciate you being here. I would say that I firmly support this effort, and I'm glad that this work was done. And just to speak, and I know it's the next agenda item, but just to speak to Counselor Herriman's point, I'm quite sure that we can find a solution around capacity issues, whether or not we look at deputizing folks, whatever we might do. But, so, I appreciate the reworking of the traffic schedule here.
Counselor Gallant, I'd like to recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I gave my two cents in, five cents actually. When disposal comes around, do you know what you're going to be doing with the old ones?
I don't think there are any immediate plans. I don't think they have a ton of value, so to speak, other than maybe a museum.
Put me on your, put me on your list.
Okay, will do.
And now having a public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Listen, anything we can do to streamline, you know, people visiting our downtown, make things easier, simpler, I'm all for it. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, please, or Counselor Gallant, did you have something? Oh, we're ready to vote. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we've gone to the public on this matter.
I just did.
You didn't, I'm so sorry.
I think we may have had someone that was interested for public comment.
Very friendly.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Well, we're going back to public comment.
Good evening. Christine Holden, Lewiston, word one. I'd like to offer just a quick moment of levity. You all know the Beatles. You ever remember the song Lovely Rita, meter maid? Doesn't need to be a police officer to check enforcement. Meter maid or traffic wardens or deputized members of the public, even unemployed senior citizens. There are other options. Good luck.
We appreciate your interest in working for the city. Further comments from the council following public comment? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Item number eight.
Item number eight, amendments to the municipal parking fees policy regarding the parking garages to allow non-monthly users the first two hours of use free and to not charge fees after 5:00 p.m. on weekdays. Requested action to approve the proposed amendment to the parking fees policy, policy manual number 42, as recommended by city administration.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Counselor Nagin. Director Libby, please kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Nate Libby. I'm Director of Economic and Community Development. What I've prepared for you is the amendment to the policy for parking garage times, and that was with support from the Clerk's Office and Administration. This was the agenda item where we could stick in the memo that sort of is a recap of the plan and answers to your various questions. We appreciate your input and your guidance there. And so briefly, for the benefit of the public, the plan in all five of its pieces, I'll go over. Number one, we're removing all of the parking meters. To Counselor Gallant's question, I believe we follow the disposition policy of city-owned property, but I understand for the Public Works Director, we can reserve some meters for, you know, interesting uses like raffles and giveaways and that kind of thing. So those meters would be gone. Counselor Chinam, to your point, I think Kevin Gagne and his team have an idea based on resurfacing work, current conditions, how they might approach the problem. And so I think they've got a sense of how to take the equipment down with the staff that they have. And it's, it'll begin with, I think, bagging or disabling all of them at once and then removing them as resources and conditions provide. So number one is removing the meters. Number two, transitioning primarily to two hour spots throughout the downtown with strategically located 30 minute spots, which is the item you just approved. We appreciated your feedback on the 15 minute question, and we did some research, worked with stakeholders. 30 minutes seems to be the sweet spot. Number three, transition parking enforcement from quarter meter reading to chalking and ticketing. Number four, you've approved this in your budget, implement a citywide wayfinding and highly visible signage program, helping to direct residents and visitors to our parking garages, our parking lots, and various amenities throughout the city and the riverfront. Related to that is adjusting the parking garages and advertising to the world that we have these benefits of free parking for the first two hours, only a dollar an hour after that, and free after 5:00 p.m. on weekdays. Your current policy provides for free parking every single weekend. And then five is work with our marketing and communications department to launch a marketing campaign around these new benefits. So that's the high level of the plan. Be happy to expand on any of the questions that were answered in the memo, and appreciate your contributions to the project and, yeah.
Thank you, Director Libby. Counselor Herriman?
Thank you. And I don't remember if I brought this up before or not, but if we're moving to, so currently it's free from 6:00 p.m. on in the evening, and you get one hour for free. So you can kind of go in at 5:00 o'clock, or it might be technically 5:01, and you have free parking. If we're going to five and then two hours, now it's from 3:00 p.m. until, I guess it would be 8:00 a.m. that you'd have free parking. And I'm not totally opposed to that, I just wonder if that's, if that's too generous of a change, or, I mean, I guess we can always, we can always change it in the, in the future. But it seemed a little bit, a little bit too generous, but I do realize that we want to be incentivizing people to use the garages and to emphasize that it's easy to park downtown. So it doesn't give me too much heartburn.
Further comments from us? Yes, Counselor Chinam?
I had that concern as well, Counselor Herriman. I agree, it's a minor point. I think technically, a driver of an automobile who pulls into the parking in a Centerville parking garage at 3:01, according to the language, has to actually leave the garage for one minute at 5:00 to go back in again to avoid the fee. I do, on a more serious note, although it's not all that more serious, have a couple of corrections to be made in the policy. Item D2 reads, southern gateway parking garage, my do so at a rate, should be may. And item 2B, D2B, parking passes to employees and administers their utilization should be singular instead of plural. Other than that, I'm very happy with the changes.
Counselor Nagin?
I greatly appreciate the two hour window. I think it's great. I've made my opinion known concerning the fact that we have the cheapest parking, I think, monthly parking anywhere in the state. And the thing is, parking is at a premium, and ultimately, we do need to generate revenues in order to maintain these parking garages. So hopefully, we can review that in the future. I'll accept it for now because I don't know if anybody has the appetite to increase the monthly rate. But literally, if you're out in the state of Maine, you want to park your car anywhere for a month, come to Lewiston because it is the cheapest anywhere.
We're now going to public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Director Libby, did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mayor. I have five minutes left of my childcare provider this evening. I have, I wondered if you might consider taking item 12 out of order. I have a few more items that can be ably handled by the staff here, but want to see if you might tick up 12.
I'm amenable to this. Madam Clerk, item number 12.
Item number 12, resolve expression of support for reclassification of the Andrus Coggin River from Gulf Island Pond to Rumro Mill in Lisbon Falls from Class C to Class B. Requested action to adopt the resolve expression of support for reclassification of the Andrus Coggin River from Gulf Island Pond to Rumro Dam in Lisbon Falls from Class C to Class B.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Counselor Chinam followed by Counselor Nagin. Would you like to kick us off, Director Libby?
Thank you, Mayor and councilors, and I appreciate the staff and the members of the public have given some grace to allow this item to be taken out of order. The Maine DEP has an open process right now where they're accepting public comment on various river classifications across the state. It also includes lake and pond water classifications. There's been a group of advocates who've been pushing Maine DEP to upgrade the class of the, of our part of the Andrus Coggin. There's a couple of groups who've been very active, one in particular gathering through a volunteer program, water quality samples over years. They've submitted that data and evidence as part of this process. You know, I'm not a water expert, but I'm reading their reports, and it suggests that our portion of the Andrus Coggin, for the most part, meets Class B certification. So that would be an upgrade from Class C to B. I think this is an important issue for image, for marketing, for recreation, for reintroducing the Andrus Coggin as a place to recreate, a place to visit, a place to spend time. There are, you know, thousands of folks who remember the conditions of the Andrus Coggin in the 60s and 70s. We have certainly come a long way. I think we'd like to see this step taken as we continue on that march to restore the Andrus Coggin.
Thank you, Director Libby. Questions, comments from the council? Yes, Counselor Nagin?
Just as a quick comment, the Andrus Coggin River was one of the rivers that was the impetus for the Clean Water Act. And the testing of the Andrus Coggin River has consistently proven for almost a decade now that it is Class B water. So that's a great recovery from one of the 10 dirtiest rivers in the United States to one that you can recreate in. I greatly support this initiative. I know that in the past, we've been hesitant because we felt that perhaps we'd be on the hook for some type of environmental remediation, but the truth is, the river is in much better condition than it was even when, even in the early 2000s. So fully support it. Thanks.
Counselor Herriman?
Thank you. Also in support, I just wanted to ask about, you know, I understand the image piece of it, if it is upgraded, and that's a big win. Practically speaking, are there other benefits that can come from it being upgraded? I wonder if, does that mean that people can pollute less? People are allowed to pollute less in the river upstream from us? Is that, am I understanding that to be true?
So one of the arguments that the advocates are making is that the DEP has said no to upgrade because the number of licensed dischargers and the volume at which they're licensed to discharge is, say, you know, a million units. The advocates say the actual discharge is only 100,000 units, and that the difference between actual and permitted is vast. And by upgrading to Class B, you sort of memorialize where we are. And so I think when we think about the major contributors to discharge, it's municipal primarily. We've reviewed this in detail with Public Works. They're sort of the stewards of all of that municipal discharge, and they've been implementing the separation plan to continue to reduce what's sent into the river. You know, they're comfortable with this resolve, they're comfortable with the upgrade, and so, you know, I think it does have some meaningful impact and sort of locks in where we are so that we're not moving backwards. We continue to improve water quality. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Musky smiling down on us. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think we're heading back to item number nine, correct?
Item number nine, order, approval for the police department to switch to Axon body wear and in-car cameras, providing $159,999 to Axon versus utility for the first year of a five-year contract. Requested action to approve the order, approval for the police department to switch to Axon body wear and in-car cameras, providing $159,999 to Axon versus utility for the first year of a five-year contract.
May I have a motion, please? Counselor Gallant?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Chinam. Chief Sergeant, please kick us off.
Thanks. I'll start off quickly. What we're looking at is, we currently have what's called utility as a company. It's named utility for our Body One cameras. Our contract runs out with utility in November, this coming November. There's been a few issues and a few problems that we wanted to address with our body cameras. The quality of the images or the video has been less than appropriate in our, in our minds, so we started looking at different options that we might have. There's very few camera services, you know, and Joey can talk about it a little bit more. He's a little bit more tech savvy than me, which is why I had him look into it. He's done an awful lot of work in getting Axon to come meet with us and to offer us some incentives to go over to their product. We've had discussions with many of you a little bit on the side, so you, you know, we wouldn't just have to be here all night because there is a lot of information to go through. But I think the benefits of switching over to Axon far outweigh not doing that and staying with utility. The biggest thing that we're looking at really is time savings for our officers. The biggest thing that we're looking at really is time savings for our officers. We're in a period of time where recruitment is a little bit difficult. We're eight people down. I just looked at the numbers today. We could lose 11 officers right now if they decided to retire today. And I think there's another nine within the next two years, and then four more for the next three years. So, we're looking at some serious turnover coming up, and I really want to have more officers on the streets. So we started looking at Axon because they have an AI component to that, which will streamline some reports for us and make report writing so much quicker, so much more efficient, and actually make better report writers out of our officers, and they'll be able to spend more time on the streets where the public should have us, ready to respond and patrolling their streets rather than sitting behind a desk doing paperwork. Joey's put together, or Axon has provided us with a little bit of a PowerPoint, so I think we'll start there if the council's okay with that.
So, one of the major things, we already have-
Can you just move the mic closer to you, please, like, a lot closer, yeah?
Is that better?
Dave will come out if it's not, so let's proceed.
All right, so, we already have Axon tasers. Tasers, Axon's kind of the only company that has them. So, one of the key features with their body cameras is the second that the taser is activated. Any body camera within 30 yards automatically activates. So anybody with inside that geofence, when a taser is activated, every camera is activated automatically as well. We are budgeted for 40 new tasers for 2025, 26, so that will implement well with the body cameras that they offer. The quality of the camera is significantly better. Some of the small features that we really like is the ability to upload videos immediately. Once a video stops recording, the video is automatically going to start loading into the Axon cloud, so it's accessible to officers, supervisors, anybody that has permissions to view that video, it's automatically there within minutes, because it has that capability, which I'll go into a little bit more, because utility does have the capability, but it was an added expense that we added on to this budget year. But, this one's integrated, it works seamlessly. It also works with their cloud system, with doing GPS on officers, as well as live streaming officers' cameras, so supervisors can see what's going on. If an officer goes down, we get a notification of it, we can click on it immediately and see what's going on. Are they down searching a vehicle, or are they actually down because they're injured? Battery life is also a major, major issue with us. Actually, the District Attorney's Office and the AG's office, and the Judicial Committee also was very frustrated with us, because we were missing a lot of body cameras, because one of the big things with a cell phone body camera is the cell phone batteries get very hot, and they explode. And I don't mean legitimately, literally explode, but they'll swell up to the point where they become very dangerous, and they have to be grounded. Axon's cameras are not cell phones, they're actual cameras with removable batteries, so if there's an issue with a battery, you can take another battery, and you can put it in there. That's actually in the budget, in the proposal, for every officer to get a camera and two batteries. This is just the in-car system. The in-car system is nice, it's a good feature, it's very similar to what we have right now. I don't think there's any special bells and whistles with their cameras. It's rear-facing, it's front-facing, it's got audio, it's got a modem in it, gives real-time information about where officers are. Same thing, officers can live, supervisors can livestream. The... I'm going to get right into the major reason why we're here and why we're asking for these, is the, well, we'll do it, real-time translation. I think I've done a demonstration for a few of you on the board. The ability to do live language translation by just pushing a button and having a full conversation with somebody through the camera, so that they can understand what's being said, we can understand what's being said, translated to us. It also transcribes what is going on in that language and in English, and it puts it together in a nice report for us to have, that we can send over to the District Attorney's Office, we can send to any services, whatever the need is for.
Language detected as Chinese. He shouted loudly at the employees, then grabbed some things and ran away. He went that way.
Okay, sir, can I get your full name, please?
So that's just a quick clip on it. I've done a few demonstrations of Spanish, Portuguese, Swahili, French, are some of the major languages that we encounter in Lewiston, that it is able to translate. One of the projections with Axon is that they're going to have another 150 to maybe 250 languages in the near future. This just came out in the last couple of months, so they're very quick, they're very efficient, and they put out 50 pretty much right away. I would suspect probably by the end of the year, even into next year, that we could have a couple hundred. And again, part of the reason why we're here today, and we're proposing this, is if we sign in the month of June with Axon, and we get this approved, it will not be incorporated until October, November. It won't be, we won't be paying until November, but hopefully, starting to implement around October. But, in the month of June, they're willing to give us unlimited free upgrades to any AI component that they come up with in the next five years throughout the contract. That's only being offered in the month of June. It was something that Axon put out special to all their districts, and they offered it to us almost immediately when they found out that this was going to be a huge factor in helping us out and getting Axon into Lewiston. The next major component, which is also part of that AI package, is the Draft One component, which again, demonstrated to a few of you already. It will generate a police narrative report just based on the interaction with the person you're speaking with and the officer. And it is a police report. It is written very well, better than significant amount of our officers, even our better officers that do write very good reports. This is still even better. It poses questions throughout the entire narrative for officers to think about, either on their next call or their next interaction, but also for that one as well, if they maybe have to make a phone call to a victim, or a clarifying question to help out with their report, so they can put a better product together. And it also does it in minutes and not hours. Generally, low-level, you know, misdemeanor crime with video, with uploading to, or downloading from our current system, uploading to the District Attorney's Office, you're talking an hour and a half, bare minimum. This, about 15 minutes for your lower-level misdemeanor cases, where you have to download, well, hopefully, you won't have to download videos anymore. The District Attorney's Office, I actually have a letter from them. They're actually looking to go onboard with Axon as well. It's called Axon Justice. And there would be no more downloading and uploading of videos, which takes out a significant amount of time from us and from the District Attorney's Office. It would just be a click of a button, and they would have it immediately.
The District Attorney's Office becomes rather frustrated with us at times, because they might have the camera footage from the primary officer, but what they're looking for is the other two officers or three officers that may have responded as well. And right now, the way it is with utility, it's difficult for the officer to get those reports. We're a very busy department. We are call to call to call. This one automatically marks it as associated with mine, if I'm the primary officer, so if Joey shows up, and he's, you know, 20 or 30 feet from me, it automatically turns his camera on and puts it under my complaint. So, that eliminates, you know, the officer not actually sending the proper videos that the District Attorney needs.
And the other part of it, too, is, the District Attorney's Office, if they go with Axon Justice and we go with Axon, if an officer forgets to tag a certain video, which shouldn't happen, because this has auto-tagging in it, so they'd actually have to untag a video, or there are certain situations where officers would show up after the fact, when that geofence was not enabled, like a detective. He would show up on scene, he would pull a witness aside, and he would have an interview with the witness. His may not be tagged through our dispatch center, so he would have to go in there and manually tag it. And if that's the case, he can still go in after the fact and do it, but the District Attorney's Office would know that that video was there and not uploaded, because it would still be in that geofence, it just wouldn't be tagged inside that geofence. So they would still be aware, and they could reach out to the lead officer or the detective or whoever else, they would know who actually who it is, because every body camera is tagged to a certain person. And they could say, hey, you didn't upload your video, or it wasn't tagged, can you just go tag your video, so that I have access to it? That's one of the features of them having it and us having it, that we all kind of work together.
If I could add a little bit on the AI component, I just must say that, you know, as an older guy that doesn't really like change, I was a little skeptical until I really watched a lot of other agencies show us their product. Cumberland County Sheriff's Department's been using this for over a year. We had a lieutenant come show it to us, and the AI is not, it's not ChatGPT, it's not Voodoo. It's actually real, a proper representation of what just truly transpired. And it writes a fantastic report, but it doesn't just stop there. You still have to have the officer make changes to that. Almost every paragraph has checks and balances, so that they know whether the officer read it or not for content. They're going to ask you to put in a motion that maybe the camera didn't, you know, pick up, like, when I got there, you know, she was crying hysterically, or whatever. They might not have picked that up with the camera. It'll also add some tidbits, and I think we shared this with Councilor Chittam just today, or was it yesterday? Time eludes me. Yeah, you know, like, it might say, like, yeah, and then the dinosaur laid an egg for all to see. You know, just to make sure that the officer actually saw that and made the changes that they're going to, they're going to make. So it's very, it's very nice, it writes a fantastic report. As Joey said, is we have some officers that are fantastic officers, but just not the best report writers, and this is going to also help them in their journey in writing reports. And we also have other officers that are great report writers that might not be as good officers, but we're working on that, other programs to help them with that as well. But overall, I'm very excited for this program. They're really working with us to make this happen. They're all through Cumberland County. I think the only Cumberland County agency that does not have them currently is South Portland, so Portland PD has them. I just went to a conference on Thursday and Friday, spoke to the Brunswick chief, as well as to the Falmouth chief and their deputy chief, and they're overwhelmingly happy with this new product. They said it's a game changer, it really is.
Yeah, one last component of this is, this is something that if we didn't get this signed this month, and let's say hypothetically, we got it signed in July, and we didn't get that unlimited AI package, we would actually not be getting this component, because it hasn't been released yet. It's called Policy Chat, where an officer can push a button on his body camera and say, what is the policy on investigating a traffic accident where there's a fatal involved? It'll actually audibly dictate that, so the officer knows, I need to call my supervisor, I need to call, you know, the District Attorney's Office. It'll go through all the checks and balances within that policy right there in front of them, so. It's another added feature that, again, we would not be getting if we didn't have that unlimited AI package, I believe.
Thank you very much, it's exciting, especially the language translation features, especially in a multicultural community where a lot of different languages are spoken, it's great. Nudgezladru, that means wonderful, in Hungarian, which I am half Hungarian, and so I'll be down later to to test it out with Hungarian.
Not later tonight, please.
Right, right, yes, yes, yes. This night's already going on long enough. Councilor Najin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you both for being here tonight. The, one of the components that I think we didn't cover, but should probably talk about, is the amount of time that we'll be saving for officers versus the the current cost. I believe that we broke down to about 3,750 hours was the conservative estimate on a year. Very conservative. So we're talking about 3,750 hours of police officers being able to be on the road, present in the community, not in the department, in the building, writing a report.
Yeah, and that was actually only, that number was only generated from half of the police reports that we deal with. The other half, I kind of attribute to, it's probably going to be multiple officers writing multiple reports, higher-level, you know, felony cases, criminal cases that go through our detective division. That was just based on the lower-level 2,500, it being half of what we normally deal with for offense reports, or, you know, more in-depth police reports.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And just real quick, because I think it's important that the public recognize this. If we're accepting the first year of a five-year contract, over the period of five years, what's the price difference between the current service, which we find, from your feedback, not good enough for what we need for our community and in the new service?
I think you have those numbers.
So, right now, with the current body camera, it's $130,000 a year, that's what we currently pay. With a added feature for 25, 26, of $21,000 to get the SIM cards, which will allow officers to have the ability to livestream from the current cameras, and live GPS from the current cameras. So that was going to be an added expense that was already approved of in the budget. Plus, we are adding three more cars to our current fleet. Those three cars were budgeted about $3,000 apiece for cameras, so in total, it added up to about $160,000 we had allocated for our budget for body cameras and video, for videos for the cruisers this year. With that, Axon agreed to take that initial $160,000 as the first year's payment. After that, the following four years are going to be $367,000 and change for the remaining four years. And again, the major component to all of this is that AI component. You know, the cameras are really good, the cruiser cameras are really good, everything about it, the interface, the platform that they use is really good, especially with the, when you add in the Axon Justice, which no other, I spoke with Motorola today, which was another company that we were dealing with, they do not have a platform right now unless you buy their entire enterprise, which is CAD, records management, and everything to get it so that it can be as seamless as the Axon Justice with the system here. So that was the added expense over the remaining four years, about $200,000 additional.
And knowing how these systems work, and considering the communities that already use these systems, this is a possibility to use as a recruiting tool in order to bring in blue pins from other communities. Is that correct? Is that a fair?
Yes, that's very fair.
I think anything better, in terms of equipment, police station, obviously, as you know, we have a fantastic new police station. I can tell you that that in itself has really boded well for us, and our officers absolutely love it, and I think if we go with this, or if it's approved by you folks, I think it's going to be yet another thing that's going to certainly attract other applicants. A lot of people want to be busy, but they don't want to be tied down and bogged down on paperwork all the time. So if they know that we have this new system, I think that would be helpful.
Council Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. My only question is, will the school resource officer have it as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, our code enforcement officers currently have six of them, and we've made provisions for them to be included as well.
Beautiful, excellent, thank you, Chief.
Councilor Saul.
Thank you for being here. I had a chance to come in and see that, and a little demonstration, and I think it was fantastic. The efficiency is top-notch. I don't know a lot about AI, but I do know that it's it's coming, it's going to be the future, and I think that these cameras are going to be the standard. And taking them on now and receiving those upgrades for five years, I think is really huge, so I fully support this. So thank you for bringing that to us.
Thank you.
We're now going to public comment for this agenda item. I understand. We're going to public comment for this agenda item.
Matthew Agren, Ward Four. While I like Chief St. Pierre, as an older gentleman who doesn't like change all that much, and I think AI, I think Skynet, I looked at this system. I didn't get to have a private showing by the police chief, but I went online and did reviews. This system is the way of the future. The ability to interact with multiple languages in our community is a godsend. How many of us speak, what is it, thirty-four current languages that's common in our city? Forty-three. How many of us speak all forty-three of them? Some of us are lucky, we speak two. But the price of this, yes, it's going to be expensive, but it's the way of the future. It's the way to keep our officers safe. It's the way to police our city in a way that we don't have to worry. Are our officers' cameras not on? Because, let's be honest, that is a fear that some people have. Have they shut the cameras off? I support this. I hope it goes through.
Further public comment? And back to the council, Councilor Longchamp, did you have something?
No.
Councilor Harriman.
Thank you, and thank you both for being here. I think that the, the time efficiencies that you'll realize from this are worth it alone. And I appreciate Sergeant Brown for reaching out, and we chatted about this. Didn't have time to come in for a demo, but it seems like it's, like it's well worth the price. I did have one quick question, and I guess the person who just commented alluded to it. So it seems like the current cameras don't have an indicator that shows whether they're on or off to, you know, to a member of the public, and it looks like these ones do. I just, I think that's a good thing, just so people know, you know, whether they want to be recorded or they don't want to be recorded, at least they know, you know, what the status is. So I appreciate that.
There's a red indicator light on the external camera, because it's not an internal one like we have now. It mounts right on outside, so it has a red circle when it's active.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you very much.
Councilor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Thank you for the demonstration this morning, and again, thank you for reaching out to many of us. Numbers, currently, we're spending a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year for a camera service. This is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the first year and three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for years two through four. So we're looking at a hundred and ten, hundred, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars additional cost for five years. Two questions. One, you knew that the contract was going to expire with utility in November of this year. Why, why wasn't this brought to the council during the regular budget session?
I can, I can answer that a little bit. We actually did start looking into this several months back through different departments, excuse me, different Motorola and Axon. And as Joey just said, the Axon really just came out with this newest version of AI. That's so very impressive to us, and did you say the last month or so?
People started, other agencies started signing on a month ago. Cumberland County was the first kind of pilot program in Maine from Axon. That started, I think it was about eight months ago. So they're slowly starting to reach out into areas in Maine and agencies in Maine. And after they signed with Portland, Cumberland County, Scarborough, Saco, that's when I started hearing about it, and that's when I started reaching out to them about it. Because we didn't really consider a new company, because at the time, ours were, they were okay. I mean, they did the job, and it's a very, very large transition. And it needs to, for me, I would think it would need to be a worthwhile transition to go from one company to the other. Even if it's going to save you a couple thousand dollars throughout the contract, because they want to get in here, that's a giant undertaking to transfer all that digital media from one age, from one company to the next, where I think it was kind of a, might as well just keep what we got, until I started doing the research on Axon and realizing this is actually kind of worth it now.
So this really post-dated any discussion that we had on the police budget when we were going through the budget negotiations?
Yeah, it really did. You know, and we tried to work with utility in many different ways, and I don't want to say give them chances. They were very receptive to many of our needs, not all. You know, like our carriers that we were wearing started to break. They weren't holding the camera anymore, they were falling out. We still had an active contract that was good until November, you know. So we feel, we felt, let's give them a try. Let's, you know, see what kind of things they can do to fix the problems that we're experiencing. And then if we needed to just, you know, go with them and make the, get an extension for the contract for, let's say, a year to give them that opportunity, we felt that that was great. Now that we've got this, and these proposals are coming to light now with a, with a date of the end of June, we felt, you know, well, obviously, we have to bring this to you sooner than later and do that now. So we've really moved things along quite a bit to try to get this through.
Okay, so to be clear, this does not have a budget impact this year?
Correct. Right.
Next year, it will have a two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar impact on the budget. I want to ameliorate that somewhat with the numbers that you provided to us, Sergeant Brown. You've indicated that at a very conservative level, this will save thirty-seven hundred hours a year. Normal work year is two thousand eighty hours, so that's equivalent to 1.5 officers that are being saved. And I think I heard you say earlier in your testimony that this is probably half of what will actually be saved. So effectively, what we're doing is, is spending two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in the out years for at least one and a half, preferably more like three, which to me, at a hundred thousand dollars per year, per officer, is a round number, is a cost savings. So I'm in favor of that. The other point that I wanted to make has escaped me, so I'm going to, oh, I know what it is. Throughout this council order, we're referring to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars several times. Is that the, really, the hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
It is, that's what we're referring to.
And, and so we don't really need to concern ourselves with money, because that's already been budgeted for this year. You are simply reapplying it to a different company.
Yes.
All right. The, the features that you've shown are very exciting. I'm very glad to see us move in that direction. I'm very glad to see the reduction in non-productive police time, putting reports together. And effectively, as I said, you have, you have purchased at least one and a half, if not three additional officers with this equipment.
Thank you.
Councilor Nagy, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, just really quickly, also, better communication with members of a community that are currently underserved. I think it's a difficult process to communicate with folks that do not speak English as a primary or even secondary language. So I think that's possibly the ability to get more cooperation from a certain segment of our population that, that we have not been able to access well in the past, you know. So I just want to point that out. And I just, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, we've got the chief of the police and the head of the crew sitting in front of us right now. When, and I have to name this, you know, we had a shooting in front of Councilor Longchamp's store today. And as I drove in, there was a standoff happening a block and a half from my, from my neighborhood. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't comment on that. And I think at some point in time soon, we should have a discussion about police priorities, because I know I was pressuring you about speeding enforcement, right? And also, the public safety plan that's in place. I think the public really needs to hear from police leadership about what is happening in our city and the constraints that you have upon you in order to respond to some of these pieces. And I know it's not this, this agenda issue, but there's just no way I can't comment on it while it's happening right now, so.
Well, I'm happy to say that I just got a text a little bit ago that we did have one in custody from, from this afternoon. And the importance of cameras is underscored. That helped us, you know, I can't really comment too much on the evidence, but the cameras that we have currently out in the, in the community certainly helped a lot with, with this case.
That's good to hear. I think, you know, overall, you know, sometime very soon in the future, we should be having this conversation about those priorities with the public so that they know the direction and also the challenges that the police department are running under right now.
Thank you.
Any further comments about this agenda item? Thank you both so much. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes.
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 Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. How many members of the Public Art Committee do we have still standing? Two, okay. How are we doing?
We're here.
My next one's quick, I promise.
Do we, do we think the next one's going to be?
Very quick, it should be.
All right, all right. Madam Clerk, the next ten, item number ten.
Order accepting and appropriating the fiscal year 2024 Burn Discretionary Community Grant Award of seventy thousand dollars. Requested action to approve the order accepting and appropriating the fiscal year 2024 Burn Discretionary Community Grant of seventy thousand dollars.
So moved.
Yes, we have, we have a motion, thank you, Councilor Nagy, and second by Councilor Saul. Chief, please kick us off.
So this is somebody giving us money for free? So it's really just the acceptance of that money. This is nothing we applied for, it was, it was simply given to us based on what they perceived as need. And it's seventy thousand dollars that allows for not permanent cameras, but movable cameras that we can use in various areas of our city at need. So really, it's just accepting that money.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, Councilor Glant.
Similar to what's at McDonald's type cameras?
We do have one of those coming as well. That it's, it's on order and it should be here very shortly, but that's separate from this at all. But it's very similar to that. Might be a smaller camera. That camera is, I think, forty-one thousand dollars. These would be multitude of cameras for a little cheaper than that, all the way up to seventy thousand dollars to fund them.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Chidham.
Thank you. In the third whereas, could you please change federally to federal? It says, whereas utilizing federally funding for these various public safety needs. Thank you.
We'll get AI to write that next time. We're going to public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Yes, Councilor Longchamp.
Yes, I think this camera, this money is going to, you know, be very well spent on cameras that could possibly go in areas where we're having a lot of issues, where people don't cooperate when they witness a crime. I do just want to share with the public that what Councilor Nagy had said about the store, a shooting happening, it happened in front of the store, but your officers were so prompt. You know, you guys were there, I think, within less than a minute. But I think the difference with this one is that you had cooperation from us, right? We said, come in and look at the cameras. We were able to help try to identify some of the folks that were involved in the shooting. And unless people stand up and start talking and cooperating, it's just going, going to get worse. So I just would like to thank you for, you know, showing up so quickly and being so professional. And I'm really happy to hear that you got someone. But again, I think it really comes down to the information that we were able to share. Does that make sense? And not trying to take anything away from your officers, that's not what I mean. But so often, a crime will happen, and you guys show up. Because I just watched it two or three days ago on Bartlett Street. Unfortunately, there was another shooting, and someone actually got shot. And I pulled up and I got out of my vehicle, and there had to have been anywhere between twenty to fifty people. Not one person saying anything. And I'm hollering, I'm like, if you saw something, you have to say something, you guys. And everyone was just... And unfortunately, you know, the victim that was shot, that I know, wouldn't share anything. So how do you make an arrest without anyone saying anything? So I just would encourage the public to, don't be afraid. I certainly wasn't today. And I just hope that, you know, people will, if they see something, they'll say something to help our community. Nice job today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments from the council? Thank you both. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Item number eleven.
Item number eleven, resolve authorizing the acceptance of the Public Art Committee's recommendation for approval of the four public art projects. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the acceptance of the Public Art Committee's recommendation for approval of four public art projects.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Councilor Glant.
Second.
Second by Councilor Harriman. We have, sorry, remind me your last name, Director.
Yes, Catherine Ruth.
Ruth is your last name.
Community Development Manager, and we have two members of the Public Art Committee here.
Please introduce yourselves.
I'm Courtney Schlochter.
Gerald Walsh.
Thank you all for being here. Manager Ruth, please kick us off.
All right, very good. We're pleased to be here this evening. The City Council received a rather hefty agenda package with materials on the remaining twenty-five fiscal year, twenty-five public art projects for the Public Art Committee, which consists of three projects from the committee's budget, one project from the remaining 2018 choice funding that we need to spend right off. In addition, this evening, just prior to the meeting, I received a proposal from the Planning Department for the two-way cycling facility demonstration that the council has looked at for Canal Street from the well-put-together workshop that you have with Public Works. And I was asked, if comfortable, as Planning and Public Works would like to move forward right off on this, it would be appropriate, if you did feel comfortable, to have a friendly amendment to approve this as the fifth project, subject to the approval of the Public Art Committee. And I apologize, this came in just before the meeting. The Public Art Committee is aware of it in general, and it's for sidewalk art. The funds are not required, as Planning will utilize some comp plan implementation funds for this, so no funding is required. So very quickly, I was assigned as Community Development to work with the committee after we had some staffing changes. I found the committee members really eager to work with the council and the staff on public art, and very thankful that you put through a budget allocation for fiscal year 26. And they'll be back in the future once we finish the fiscal year 25 projects. And we'll also begin with a proposal for making the regulations a little bit clearer. In the package, you received a memo from Director Libby. It explains how we got to this point, and that we should have some directions that are a little bit clearer for the committee and for the council, with the council having, of course, the overall authority for the approval of the public art. But to have a process that would be a little bit more streamlined. Right now, we have, from my research, just three pages that have been approved. However, you have many other proposed documents for public art projects, public art policy recommendations, which is very complicated. And you had your really nice workshops, you have a lot of different information. And so we would like to streamline that to save your time as well as our time. So basically, we have several projects, four in total, plus the new one from Planning. And if you would like, I can zip down through them very quickly with two or three sentences, so the public's aware. And then we've got our committee members, who are the experts on some of the projects, if that's agreeable. Very good. So we will zip down through the projects. We have proposed, from the committee meeting on June ninth, which was my second meeting with the group, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and one dollars remains in fiscal year 25. First project is window mirrors and/or window wraps. Fifteen thousand dollars was originally budgeted for this project. And the committee, through a process prior to my becoming involved, had chosen LA Arts to administer the project. And under the regulations in the code, there have to be public art service contracts in accordance with the directions. So the committee members can't just go... accordance with the direction, so the committee members can't just go out and work on it, they have to have a contract. So I've gone through and drafted out some contracts for them. And we have a multitude of locations in the downtown that have been examined by Mr. Walsh, who works with LA Arts and has wonderful background. We'll have letters of agreement that will be obtained for permission to paint the murals. And Exhibit One, which lists out the details and some samples and places where this would take place, explains out the theory on, of course, being in the area where you have some derelict buildings and fixing them up, and so that with the window wraps, which are temporary, and the murals, which are maybe three years for the painting, would be proposed to make the areas look much better with the budget that's available. So Mr. Walsh is here for any questions that you might have on that item.
Perhaps if we, one second, councilors, perhaps if we can just go through all of the items, and then we will take questions at the end.
Alright, wonderful.
Thank you.
Good, that'll actually save time, too. B is sidewalk art, we have $2,000 that's available for this project, and of course, we have one of our committee members, Courtney, who would organize that project. With a total budget of $2,000, we would have $125 for a power washer, so when the murals fade, they're not there for Public Works to have to take care of, and there would be $100 for labor to remove the paint, somebody being hired to do that. That leaves $1,775 to be split among the artists, which would be 12 to 16, through a competitive process. The murals would be situated from 124 to 180 Lisbon Street, and then there would be directions on exactly what to do. We would have safety standards with safety vests and traffic cones to make sure that everybody is safe, and the designs that went out would have to be approved by Courtney, so that we wouldn't have things show up that would be inappropriate. Third project is the John Jenkins Bridge lighting proposal. The remaining $7,701 in the fiscal year 25 budget has been recommended to be a portion for bridge lighting, and this is a proposal that's in your package to light the John Jenkins pedestrian bridge that crosses the Andrusgoggin River and connects Lewiston and Auburn's Parks. And as you know, the parks are dedicated to three police officers who died in the line of duty. And so this was a very nice proposal, in Exhibit Two, that came from Joseph Philon. The committee also talked about looking at that project for funding in the fiscal year 26 budget. And at this point, the federal, the fiscal year 26 budget has not been put together, but we've received a lot of proposals for that, and so we'll be bringing that into you with a complete package of the items that would be funded. The fourth project that we brought forward was the approval of art installation from the remaining choice planning grant, and these funds needed to be spent by June 30th. However, Director Libby was able to get an amendment until September 30th, which is very good. And so LA Arts was chosen as the contractor for the project, and artist has been chosen, there's a beautiful design that's in the package. Cost of the mural is $16,500 to be in the park that's located off Cedar Street, which is the Lionel Podvin Park. And since these choice funding comes from HUD, there's a whole series of different federal paperwork that we have to file, environmental review, historic review, et cetera, and we should, I should be able to start that right off, if approved, and get that done so that we can go through the waiting periods and the approvals. So it'll be 45 days after I finish the paperwork, which can be a little package, but we can get that done shortly for you. That's in Exhibit Three. And then the committee also has the new proposal from Planning, if you are interested in going forward with that, for the friendly amendment. No funding is required, but that would be on Canal Street and the project that you already talked about with Public Works. Thank you.
Manager Ruth, we are lucky to have you, thank you. Courtney or Gerald, is there anything that you two would like to say before we open up for questions? I'm sorry?
She covered everything.
Oh, okay, excellent. And then, Madam Clerk, whether we add this, so does this represent a substantive change? Do we need to vote on this as a, as a regular amendment, or what are your thoughts?
Excuse me, it does feel like it would be an actual amendment to vote on, because it is an additional project that's being added to the list.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking, too. I guess questions, and then we'll, and then I would like to entertain a, for someone to make such a motion. Questions first. Counselor Chidham.
Thank you. I'm looking at the Lionel Podvin Park shed, storehouse, whatever. Why is State Historic Preservation Review Commission reviewing this? Is, is the park itself historically listed? The building certainly doesn't appear to be.
No, the building certainly isn't, and the park, to my knowledge, is not. It's because it's the choice funding, so it's HUD funding, which requires that you have all the proper permits. They require an environmental review, and I did a really complicated one, so I'm thinking this one will be much easier as the second one, and it does require the Historic Preservation Commission be contacted.
So this is check a box and they'll send it back?
Correct, yes.
Okay, alright, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Further, yes, Counselor Najin.
Maybe just a little bit of specifics on the planning board piece, so you're talking about the Canal Street limiting of the, the, the road restriction that we're putting in as a test, as a pilot? So we're gonna be painting the sidewalks there, or what are we doing?
That would be correct. So this is a project, I went back and watched your workshop, and Public Works did a really good job explaining that out. So basically, this is to install a temporary change to Canal Street over three city blocks for the next four months, and then probably the next year. So both the council, it indicates the council and MDOT signed off on the temporary installment, and it's basically closing one vehicle travel lane from Main Street to Chestnut Street, and using this added space for temporary dedicated bike lanes. In the block from Pine Street to Chester, they're planning to eliminate the on-street parking on the canal side of the road, not many people use that, sometimes a truck is there. And in its place, they'll be putting temporary pedestrian amenities. They're looking to paint the pavement with a mural, and then place temporary seating in the area, and they noted that Public Works has some unallocated seating that can go in, and this is basically the area where it's like a free-for-all speeding that takes place. So that is a temporary, like, project to test out, to see how it works before permanent and larger costs are involved.
I, I was pretty sure that in that meeting, that I was really specific about not wanting to see a mural in the, in that area, and I don't think anybody else was supporting that concept, but, but regardless, I don't wanna hold things up too much about it, I just, there, there's a piece where I think pedestrian changes need to be very clear on what they are, and so like geometric patterns is one of the things I brought up, like it cannot be something that's unclear as to why, that, that's a non, non-driveable area, so I just wanna specify that, you know, like.
Counselor Arumman.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for this project, it would be, the sidewalk would stay as-is, it would be the, the parking spaces, I think it's nine of them, that would be turned into a, basically a tiny little park, and it would be the pavement in those parking spaces that would be painted. And then, then you'd have a, the right-hand lane of Canal Street would be turned into a two-way bike lane, and the left-hand side of, the left-hand lane of Canal Street would remain as the general travel lane. So it's, it would be on the pavement, but in the parking spaces, which would be converted to a, a small little park.
Yes, back to you, Counselor Najin.
So, so just for clarification, 'cause you seem to have more information than I do about this, would there be separators in someplace in order to, to actually keep vehi, get new traffic out of it? Okay, fine.
Further questions, comments from the council? We're heading to public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Counselor Arumman.
I guess I would like to propose an amendment to the resolve to add, after the, after number four, talking about Lionel Podvin Park, to add number five, the, let's see, what's a good title for this? The Canal Street Parklet Pavement Painting. Doesn't have a cost, so I guess we don't have to add that. Yeah, so it's just adding that number five to the list.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Glant. Madam Clerk, did you get all that?
Yes, I did. It would be to add the fifth project, which would be the Canal Street Parklet Sidewalk Art Project, and then Manager Ruth also suggested that, the addition of language, that it be subject to the approval of the Public Art Committee, because they have not seen this yet, if that's okay with you, Counselor.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Glant, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, please call the vote on this amendment.
Five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Any final thoughts from our presenters, or any final questions from councilors? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks very much.
We're up to, item number 13.
Item number 13, order authorizing the acceptance of Captain Bazanet Way as a public street. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the acceptance of Captain Bazanet Way as a public street.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Najin.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Glant. Engineer Bowley, thank you so much. Chief, are you coming up?
Yeah.
Come on down. Thank you for being here. Chief Karen, Engineer Bowley, please kick us off.
Sure. So this is a, formerly a private street named JD Way that was servicing the two lots adjacent that the city took ownership of in 2022, along with the parcel to build the new fire station. The private road ended before the lot for the fire station, so it had to be extended to provide frontage for the fire station. So the, the road was completely rebuilt to current city standards. Water sewer, stormwater piping was installed to service the new station, so all of that has been installed and is ready to accept in order to provide a occupancy certificate to open the new station. So we're here to get the street accepted as a standard city street.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bowley, I've looked at the, the property description of this street, and of the 15 courses that are described here, 11 of them, 11 of them refer to monuments to be set. I'm not at all in favor of accepting a street with monuments to be set. I've, I've encountered that too many times, indeed descriptions that are 15, 20, 25 years old, and the monuments never were. Is there a time criticality in getting this street accepted? Can it wait until those monuments have been set, which I assume would be after construction of the fire department, of the fire station?
Yeah, the, the surveyor, Subago, that wrote that description has it in their contract to set those, we were just waiting for the final loaming to be done on the sides of the road, so that they don't get disturbed by the, by the finished, finished work. I'm not sure if that got done this week, as far as the loaming goes, they were planning to set those in the next couple of weeks before the station opens.
So we have contracted, they are under contract to set those monuments?
They are.
Alright, so at least there's that to be said. I will also point out that surveying standards require a surveyor who prepares a property description to put a seal and signature on that, and I don't see any here, so you might refer that back to Subago Technics. Their failure to stamp this and seal it is a violation of surveying standards. With your assurance that those, that we have already contracted Subago Technics to set these monuments, I, I will go ahead and approve the acceptance of Captain Bazanet Way.
I will make sure they get set.
Thank you, sir.
We have, we have an open PO for it.
Thank you.
Further comments? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you both.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Item number 14.
Item number 14, ballots for election of the Andrusgoggin County Budget Committee Members. There are three items for requested action, because we have the three districts, county districts within our, within the city. Item number one, to nominate candidates to the District One Andrusgoggin County Budget Committee and to determine which candidates to support on the ballot.
May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council cast a vote for Tim Galant and Robert Reed on District Number One of the, for the County Budget Ballot, Committee Ballot. I'm having trouble reading tonight, so... Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Counselor Galant and Robert Reed.
Do we need to vote on those separately, Madam Clerk?
Probably, because you have separate ballots that you have to sign.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so I guess we'll do them one at a time. Do we have, does that need, do this, does that need a second, or are we simply nominating people and then voting on them?
I, I think it was sort of a combination of nomination and motion to approve, if that's correct, Counselor?
Alright, yes.
A nomination and a motion to approve all at the same time.
Yes.
So a second would be needed, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Second.
Counselor Glant, thank you. Okay, discussion on these two names? Public comment? Back to the council, and then we, we'll vote on them separately then, Madam Clerk?
I think separately, because you do have the three separate ballots you have to sign.
Right, okay. Seeing no further discussion from the councilors. Madam Clerk, I guess commence the voting.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero. The next item is to nominate candidates to the District Two Andrusgoggin County Budget Committee and determine which candidates to support on the ballot.
Yes, Counselor Chidham.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that City Council cast a vote for Susan Longchamp, for the municipal official on District Two of the County Budget Ballot, Committee Ballot.
I second that.
Excellent. Public comment for this? Back to the council, yes, Counselor Chidham.
Yeah, one question is, when we find a candidate to fill the resident, Lewiston resident slot, do we know what the process is to get that person seated on the Budget Committee?
I do not know the county timeframes or their process, we can call tomorrow and ask. I don't know the process.
Okay. We, we will not be meeting until far late October, September, October, so I think there's time to do it, and I'm sure that there's enough wiggle room in the way that the charter and the county balloting is concerned, that I think we can probably manage to fill that slot.
We, if we do have questions, we do have a former county commissioner here who, who can speak to the process if, perhaps if you could just speak to that really quick, Mr. Roy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, before I say something, if I could act-
But really quick, Mr. Roy.
A quick question to the city clerks. So when the, back in May, when the, each county commissioner held the caucus, no one from Lewiston attended, correct? That's why we're, oh, sorry.
In District Three, if I could, Mr. Mayor, in District Three, people were nominated at the caucus, but my understanding, and Counselor Chidham can correct me, 'cause I believe he was there, Districts One and Two did not have anyone nominated at the caucus, but District Three did.
Okay, of course, then District Three also gets complicated, because it's part of Lewiston, and then Green and Durham, which traditionally would outvote, well, basically, Counselor Chidham being the only municipal official from Lewiston generally, well, unless the mayor lives in Ward Six, generally, like, the case was- Ward Six generally, like, the case with Mark Care, but to answer the question, so if no one is actually nominated and elected through this nominee, well, this ballot process, as I said when we did this, when we had vacancies, when the change order from the last council to this council, because there was some vacancies, so any vacancy that occurs per the charter, it's the remit of the County Budget Committee to fill a vacancy. So if nothing hap, if nothing happens today, like, as you say, only Counselor Longchamps was nominated, so that, if nothing, if no one's nominated through your balloting process here, so September, some, somebody can just, literally just show up to the County Budget Committee, and the, the rest of the committee would see that.
Correct.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roy. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, and so you'll be voting on for District Two, the elected official representative, which you've nominated, Susan Longchamp. Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations.
Uh, the third item to review the list of candidates is presented on the District Three Andrusgoggin County Ballot for election of the County Commissioner, County Budget Committee, and determine which candidate to support on the ballot.
Any thoughts and comments from councilors? Counselor Chidham, yes?
I'll nominate myself. I move that the City Council cast a ballot for David Chidham and Paula Masselli in District Three of the County Budget Committee Ballot.
I'll second that.
Uh, seconded by Tim Galant. Counselor Galant, uh, public comment for this? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now up to the second public comment period for people who did not come, already comment in the first public comment period. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. We are now up to reports and updates, and before taking things from councilors, we have a couple of items here. If we could have Director Carl Murray from LHA, please join us at the table here to give us an update from Lewiston Housing Authority.
I'm not sure how you guys do this on a regular basis. Impressive.
Yeah, can you just move the mic closer to you, or folks at home, who are still awake and watching this?
Ed, LHA. Wanted to come, thank you for the invite tonight, to give you guys a brief update on the things we have going on, and then I'll happily field any questions that you have. So our Wedgewood Development, which is under construction right now, is nearly fifty percent complete. Four buildings have been released to us, another one's being prepared too. It was thirty-three families last week, I believe. It's gone up since then. So we're, we're getting closer to the eighty-two families that will ultimately live there. We anticipate being completed by the end of the year. DeWitt, I'm sure everyone's seen, that is starting to come down. So Sixty Pine is down, Forty Pine will be started here in the near future. Demolition should last between, we've got a time period there of roughly about six to eight weeks to get that done, to give them a little room in case they run into anything. And then construction completing sometime around December, January, December twenty-twenty-six, and could bleed over into the first part of January of twenty-twenty-seven. Martel School, working with Main Housing Authority, our investor Redstone, the construction company, Penob Scott, general contractors, and our engineers to finish up everything there and get to a closing. We anticipate having that done by the end of the year, and shovels in the ground. And then some exciting news that was made official today is that we received two more tax credit awards today, one for Martel Two, and another one for Soleil, which is going to be on the sixty-one Ash Street. It's the parking lot that was part of the Sun Journal campus. And then just one other, two other, I'm sorry, three other items for you guys. B Street Health Center expansion, that's, we're finalizing leases right now, and working with a, a new party that's come to the table to work with us there. Can't divulge that one yet, but hope to have those completed shortly. Once we get that done, which we hope to have in the next thirty to forty-five days, we'll begin our construction of that site, which we estimate taking roughly nine months to complete, which will be a huge benefit to the community. Our HUD capable award, which we had sent something out to you guys a while about, that was a $2.5 million award that we got to provide updates to seniors' houses in five different counties. We've, we've got a waiting list now in Andrusgoggin County alone of up to thirty families. Five houses have been completed, there's another five that are underway right now, and we'll continue plugging through those and taking on applications. The cool thing about this is it's not just updates to the houses, but it also provides OT services for the people if they so wish to take advantage of them, which is a, a pretty amazing component to have added into this grant. So we're really excited about that, it's been well received, and we hope to finish up this grant and continue to get it administered throughout the, Andrusgoggin County and other surrounding counties. And then the last thing that we have going on, that's gonna, it's just been a lot of paperwork for us in preparation over the last three to four years to get the models right, but we're moving quickly towards getting our final applications into HUD for the transition of our public housing properties away from public housing and into the Section Eight program, which is a huge mandate of HUD right now, and also then allows a tax credit component to be layered in, because Section Eight plays well with tax credits and public housing does not. So if all goes well, and our applications are accepted by HUD, we hope to begin getting through that process, and then we can begin the process of applying to Main Housing for tax credits to either rebuild or rehab our existing properties. It's roughly three hundred and eighty-seven units at multiple different properties, and they're all a minimum of fifty-five years old at this point in time, so they're in dire need of being updated. So those are the big ticket items. If you guys have any other questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Uh, yes, Counselor Najin.
I just wanted to thank you for being here, and also for sitting through the entire meeting in order to give the, the report and update. Certainly sounds like a lot of exciting things going on, and I appreciate that the head of LHA is putting this effort out to let the public know what the projects are, what the timelines are, and, and, and not having me speak for you. So, thank you very much.
Happy to be here whenever you guys want additional updates.
Uh, Counselor Chidham?
Thank you, Mr. Kilmurray. You said that HUD is providing OT services for upgrading senior housing? I didn't understand OT services.
It, I, I don't know the actual, occupational therapy, thank you. It's, it's just to help people use, you know, be able to navigate their house better once we make the upgrades.
I understand occupational therapy. All right, got that. Wasn't sure whether you said OT or OP or what. All right, second question, so park and pioneer parking spaces are going to be occluded through March, April next year?
Um, yeah, yeah, they're gonna be, downtown, you're talking about, yeah, those Jersey barriers are gonna be up for quite some time until we rebuild all the sidewalks, because there's a pretty major project that's gonna be done to fix the sidewalks and change the parking pattern down there.
All right, thank you.
Uh, this isn't really an agenda item, but I think in past practice, we've gone to the public comment for these kinds of updates. We're now up to a public comment.
Louise Sampson, Ward Five. Mr. Kilmurray, exactly when do you plan on putting the shovels down for Martel? Do you have any idea?
Before the end of the year.
Just before the end of the year? So that could be July, August, September, October, November, December, correct?
Correct.
Why has that project been pushed out so many times?
It, it really hasn't been pushed out that many. Do you guys want me to comment on this? I apologize. I feel like I can respond.
One second, Director, one second. So we will have you finish your public comment period here, the rest of public comment, should there be any, and then we will have Director Carl Murray speak to things rather than back and forth.
One more question.
Yes.
When you do get started with construction, what is the time before it will be ready to take on as old seniors?
Can I re-answer?
We're, we're gonna, as I was just saying, we were going to wait for-
Okay, I'm done.
Okay. We're happy to have you, thank you. Further public comment? Public comment is now closed. Yes, Director Kilmurray.
So this project, in the way that the public has seen it, has been, feels like it's been pushed out over a long period of time, but there has been, I think this is the fifth iteration of this project that has got here, and the timeline of the project that find, and I don't want to go through the whole timeline of how we got to where we are, but in the timeline of how this project is operating now, it's, it's on a normal trajectory. They, when they get to the end, they sometimes take a little bit longer, depending on what's in the pipeline ahead of us, and what sort of things are happening in the market at those times. So this isn't, this isn't delayed, they, they just sometimes take more time. They're incredibly complicated deals, so, but I do sympathize with the public in the fact that we've been talking about this project, I mean, forever. I mean, it, it, it kills me not, I mean, it, it is our mission to provide affordable housing. When I took this job, it was my mission to expand Lewiston's options for affordable housing, and we're just getting to that point now. But once the ball gets rolling, as you can see, we got two new tax credit awards now, I don't plan to stop this process, we plan to keep following through on that and providing more options when the city and the planning board and the council want to allow us to do that. We will continue to put in, in tax credit applications, so we can continue to expand that. But we want nothing more to get this out of the ground. Delays are not something that we're a fan of, and we'll continue to push to make this happen, as well as many other projects over time.
Thank you, Director, yes, Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Director Kilmurray, an object lesson here. We were told that this project would be breaking ground in the spring. Perhaps the lesson is not to be too, too, I've lost the word.
Aggressive, yes.
Too aggressive in your, in your projections.
Yep.
My fellow Counselor Najin is fond of saying, you know, promise late and deliver early, and I think the cart got flipped around on this one, so promises were made early and the delivery is late, according to that timetable, so.
Fair enough.
Object lesson, thank you, sir.
Yes, Counselor Najin.
I just want to acknowledge that I think the community is going to be very pleased with the fact that the second iteration of Martel is going to be worked on as well. So I think that's, it's great that you've received the funding mechanism in order to make sure that we can expand the senior housing on what is a very big lot. And so there's, there's, the more senior housing, especially at Martel, the better. And so, yeah, I just wanted to comment that securing those funds is very good.
If I could just add one other piece, too, had we, had, had we not been stopped by COVID originally, and we had built the forty-four units that we were funded for that we lost due to that, that lot would have been restricted to forty-four units for the, and the way we would have had it, it would have been restricted, and we couldn't have done what we did. So having the time to, and the iterations that came through and the roadblocks that we ran into, will ultimately create an additional eighty-eight units at that site that I, you know, and I realize it took additional time to get there, but those units will stand the test of time. They will be here long after, and, and last far longer than any, you know, perceived delays that we've had along the way. So there are some, some blessings amongst the time that it took us to get here, and the strife that we all went through to, to get through this process.
Thank you.
We appreciate Lewiston Housing's tenacity in getting this done.
Thank you.
Uh, further questions for Director Kilmurray? We appreciate you being here.
Thank you, have a good night.
We're, we're gonna stick around a little while longer. So now we're up to a shelter committee report. I notice we have Kevin Bulliard here. He's, uh, are, are you coming up to join us, or how are we proceeding with the update? Oh, you're giving the update, okay. Kevin, thank, thank you at least for being here. Yes, Counselor Roy, please continue.
Okay. So, well, I'll just read from the script. Greetings, Lewiston Mayor and councilors. The shelter committee continues to meet biweekly basis in order to support Cadence Kitchen and creation of a new shelter. Below are important updates for those activities. Cadence Kitchen has been awarded $2.5 million from Main Housing for startup of a new shelter, primarily for acquisition and construction costs. Those funds cannot be released to Cadence Kitchen until other sources of funding have been leveraged. At, at the time, when the grant application was submitted to Main Housing, the largest other source of funding was a $3 million, $3 million from the City of Lewiston's Community Resilience Grant to the EPA. The grant request to the EPA totaled 20 million and included other activities beyond the shelter, including energy efficiency, efficiency funding for Lewiston Homes. EPA staff and Lewiston City staff were quite confident in Lewiston's chances of obtaining the grant at that time. It was factored into the pro forma for the new emergency homeless shelter. While the city submitted the completed grant application on time, the application was not reviewed by the EPA in time before the program funding was impounded by executive branch. While the city application was not technically declined, the fate of that program and the city's application are too uncertain to be considered as likely source of funding. The next largest source of funding in the original pro forma was funding from the Andrusgoggin County ARPA allocation. The funding request was declined largely over a technicality as to when the request was made and upon the advice of a consultant to the county. It was not declined due to the content of the request, and we understand that the county remains supportive in the effort to create a shelter. As you're aware, the City of Lewiston dedicated $400,000 to, of funding to FY26 for the shelter pending the execution of an agreement with Cadence. The city administrator has provided a letter, Cadence, to share with the project partners that speaks of this intention. The City of Auburn has also budgeted $200,000 for FY26 for a purpose that can include the Lewiston Shelter pending detailed and accountable proposal from Cadence Kitchen. Mayor Harbin has provided a letter stating this fact and can be shared among the partners. Andrusgoggin County makes calendar year budgets and is, and is just beginning its process to develop next year's budget. Cadence submitted a funding request for $400,000 from the county at, at the same time it made the request of Lewiston and Auburn. Cadence will be refreshing that request in the coming weeks, and we hope the, for the county to take this request very seriously during the budget process. Funding from Lewiston and Auburn will help motivate the county to make the requests, take the request seriously. Cadence will likely have a building under contract within the next two to six weeks, but it will be counting on the funding from Main Housing to be released in order to move forward with that acquisition. The requested amount of direct congressional spending through Senator Collins' office has increased since the original pro forma, in part to make up for some of the loss of the funding, federal funding sources. Senator Collins' staff are willing to seriously consider a request once Cadence has the site, has site control. Once Cadence has the proposed site under contract, they will bring the contract to Senator Collins' office, along with the letters from Lewiston and Auburn and Main Housing, to see if Senator Collins is willing to mobilize the funding and other resources for the table. Lastly, Cadence Kitchen will, Cadence will return to Main Housing with those other letters, as well as a letter from, hopefully, Senator Collins, to verify whether sufficient funds will be met with in regards to leveraging funding. Main Housing has not specified what the required leverage amount is, nor a deadline or a deadline which it must be secured. Main Housing funding is committed to Lewiston, but not indefinitely. It is therefore important to keep mobilizing as much support as possible, if we hope to see the $2.5 million actually issued to the shelter. Cadence is currently researching other funding sources. The shelter committee has recommended that the staff from the City of Lewiston research grant opportunities if possible. It considers both short-term and long-term financial needs of the emergency shelter for possible inclusion in those grant applications. It would also be noted that when Cadence Kitchen was selected as nonprofit partner to develop the new city, the new shelter with the City of Lewiston, a partnership agreement was not immediately executed. The expectation of both parties has been that the city, the City of Lewiston would propose the first draft of that agreement. City staff have been waiting for the council to approve funding for the shelter before executing such an agreement, and now that the $400,000 has been budgeted, staff can proceed with preparing that agreement. Now that the four-hundred thousand has been budgeted, staff can proceed with preparing that agreement. And then there was a new update that needs to be shared. We've just received an update that Main Housing has set a due date of August first, two thousand twenty-five by which Cadence Kitchen must be able to show years one and two of shelter operations funding committed and confirmed. If such committees are not made, if, if such commitments are not made, the two-point-five million dollars will be rescinded. The four-hundred thousand for year one was an excellent step for the, on the part of the city of, City of Lewiston. In the spirit of leveraging the state grant for the benefit of our community, invite all of us to consider what we can, what can be done to demonstrate at minimum a similar commitment to the city for year two, if not longer. So that is our update.
Thank you. You are, you, you serve as the co-chair of the committee, correct? And then, Tim, you also serve on the committee. Is that correct? Excellent. Questions for either one of them. Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. If Main Housing is requiring demonstration that years one and two be funded, what is the total number that, that would satisfy Main Housing? It appears that you have four-hundred thousand dollars from the City of Lewiston and you have up to two-hundred thousand dollars from the City of Auburn. What is left to supply or to meet the two-year operational requirement funding level?
I imagine that would have to correspond with the proposed budget, but we have Kevin from Cadence Kitchen here.
Yes, thank you. Kevin Bullard, Cadence Kitchen. So the, the main house, the two-and-a-half million dollar long-term solutions grant that Cadence Kitchen submitted for that was in partnership with the City of Lewiston based off of the five-year operating and development budgets that were provided by the Shelter Ad Hoc Committee. So when we had the opportunity to purchase the building, Main Housing wanted confirmation of the other funding sources which we were not able to provide at that time. So they did not release the full funding for the purchasing of the building until that funding was secured. So two years of operational costs on paper is approximately three million dollars. Cadence Kitchen is in a situation to preserve the possibility of the shelter being opened, to waive the admin fees for Cadence Kitchen, which potentially total over two-hundred thousand dollars annually for the first two years to bring that operating budget down to two-point-six million that we would need to retain. And again, that would be with Cadence Kitchen moving forward with a zero percent admin fee, which I think is, is pretty unheard of in the nonprofit world, just to fulfill our obligation in this partnership. So we have a responsibility now to Main Housing to confirm funding for the first two years of operation. Assuming Cadence Kitchen waives the admin fee, that total would be two-point-six million dollars.
Thank you. I think it's admirable, Mr. Bullard, that you're willing to waive that admin fee. I hope it's not necessary. Very generous and admirable of you to do that. However, you have secured up to six-hundred thousand and we need two-point-six million, assuming that you waive your fees.
Correct. We need commitments of two-point-six million, yes, so.
And you have six-hundred thousand, so you need another two million dollars.
Yep, and we have the commitment from the City of Lewiston for the four-hundred thousand dollars. We have the commitment from the City of Auburn, assuming that the operate, that the shelter becomes operational, for another two-hundred thousand dollars. The six-hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars is the estimated carryover from the two-point-five million that Main Housing provided for purchase and development with the remaining funds being able to be used for operational expenses.
Okay. Can, can we see those budget numbers on paper at some point?
Yeah, I would have imagined you would have all of those budget numbers because they were all, they were all created by the Shelter Ad Hoc Committee.
All right. I, I have not seen those numbers.
Yeah, I guess Counselor Najin, do you want to speak to?
Neither have I. The Shelter Ad Hoc Committee doesn't report back to the council unless it's done through council feedback as we just did tonight. So we, we're not in regular communication with it, with the count, with the Ad Hoc Committee.
Yeah, I think the challenge is that the Main Housing award was granted in November of two thousand twenty-four with a city partnership, you know, so we are now facing a potential deadline. And Cadence Kitchen has brought five-hundred percent of the initial funding in that budget, which was five-hundred thousand dollars was our initial obligation. We have come to the table with two-point-five million. We're just trying to see where the city partnership comes to the table as well.
We've already committed four-hundred thousand dollars for this year. And so if there's, if, if there's a proposal for us to commit further funds, then that has to be brought through as a, as, as an agenda item.
A commitment from the City of Lewiston in the general budget has been part of this budget since day one. So it's very frustrating from our standpoint.
From the Shelter Committee, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Which was presented to Main Housing to secure the two-and-a-half million dollar grant.
It, it was not part of our proposed budget for two thousand twenty-five, so.
We, we were told that there was concern as far as which funding pool those funds were going to come from. It was potentially going to come from CMP TIF money. It was potentially going to come from opioid money. It was always going to potentially come from somewhere. It was just undetermined. So Cadence Kitchen was just being patient in the process and, and waiting for those determinations to be made. But we also knew that this Main Housing deadline was inevitable.
Understood.
Administrator O'Malley, when we set aside the four-hundred thousand, that was coming from what? The general fund?
Yep. That was from fund balance, yes.
Or, or, sorry. Yes, fund balance. Thank you. All right. Sorry, anything further, Counselor Najin? Counselor Chittam.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still, I would like to see these numbers because I have not seen them. I understand we have committed four-hundred thousand dollars. I'm now hearing that that's insufficient. This is the first time I've heard that we are expected or the, the partnership is expected to demonstrate two years of operating expenses to Main Housing. And I understand Main Housing has just, within the past few weeks, created this October, I'm sorry, the August first deadline. So there is understandable pressure. I understand the frustration. It's shared. But I need to know, we need to know what needs to be done at this point in order to salvage the two-point-five million dollar grant that you applied for and received from Main Housing. I would also like to know if Main Housing has been approached to see whether that deadline is cast in stone or it's movable. Because six weeks to raise whatever, an unknown amount of money, to me, seems like a, a heavy lift. Particularly since we're talking about money that would be appropriated in the twenty-six, twenty-seven or fiscal twenty-seven, which we don't have any authority to do at this point. So there's a disconnect somewhere and there's some frustration. I'd like to see what number it is that, that is expected to be raised, what number would be satisfying to Main Housing and whether or not Main Housing is willing to move on its April, August first deadline. And I don't know who is going to ask those questions of Main Housing or who is going to provide. I, I assume the Shelter Committee will provide the budgets that Main Housing is expecting to be met for two years of operating expenses. Is that correct? Thank you. I need some answers.
Yes, so, yeah, I, I realize that all of the committee was there, but was there specific people who drafted these budgets? Or who can, who, who were primarily responsible for them?
Cadence Kitchen was responsible for providing the operational budget. And I believe Craig Sattlemeyer and Counselor Galant worked on the development and funding sources budget. So this whole time Cadence Kitchen has been responsible for the operational end and the Shelter Committee had been providing the funding sources for the development and operational costs, which was part of one of their three primary responsibilities when that committee was established, was to develop the RFP process and the wording to identify the building and to identify funding sources.
Right, okay. So who, who's, who's in, who actually has these, these budgets that could then be forwarded to all of us? Counselor Galant?
We have them. He, he's given, provided a copy to the committee. So if you guys want a copy, ask for a copy and we'll send them to you. No one's asked for any copies, so that's why you're all acting surprised. You're not on the chopping chain to get it because it wasn't a requirement. So if you want a copy, we'll make sure you guys got a copy.
We are politely requesting a copy, Counselor Galant.
Then we can make sure that happens.
Thank you so much. Counselor Harriman.
I don't understand.
Thank you. So I, I guess.
Do these committees, is their responsibility, both like, we've been in this process since July of two thousand twenty-four.
I understand.
Cadence Kitchen has sacrificed everything to get to this. We don't have a place to operate out of come September because we have committed everything to this city partnership. So it's very frustrating when I'm sitting in front of the powers-to-be and they're all scratching their heads looking at me with dismay and like it, it, I'm doing the best I can to maintain professional because I wasn't supposed to be in this position tonight. The, the chair of the committee should be here. The last time there was an update, it was Cadence Kitchen. Everything has fallen on Cadence Kitchen. Cadence Kitchen is responsible for getting the building. Cadence Kitchen is now responsible for finding the other funding. Cadence Kitchen is, that's, that, that was not part of the initial RFP process that we signed up for. So I feel like we went to a job interview off of one description. We accepted the position and we showed up to the first day of work and we're now told we're cleaning toilets. So it, it's, it's very frustr, and we're at a deadline now that potentially won't be met. And the city is going to lose out on one of the most vital resources. We want to clean up that park. You're not cleaning up that park till you get a place for these individuals to go twenty-four hours a day. So it, it's very frustrating that the ball could just, I don't want to say be dropped, but like we, we have a deadline that's forty-something days away and no one knows what's going on.
I understand and I appreciate you being here and I understand your frustration. Counselor Harriman. Counselor Harriman, did you have something to say?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Mike Chaps.
I'm just wondering how did we get here? I don't want you to explain.
We put out an RFP without any money attached to it. So I think that was the beginning of the frustrations with Cadence Kitchen. His, his organization was the only one that responded to the RFP that you folks directed city staff to put out. We don't usually put out an RFP without any money attached to it. During the process of the direction of the, the Ad Hoc Committee, Counselor Galant came up with some suggestions of where we could get some funding at the time. We had that application that Director Libby for EPA presented it to you. We were very positive at that time. However, there was a change in the federal government, so that money went away. During the course of Kevin, excuse me, Cadence Kitchen was applying for grants and the Main Housing, we still hadn't told them how much money we were going to give them. We went through the budget process. We had different versions of what we wanted to give on the city council. I had counselors telling me we're not going to use any city tax money to pay for this and then others saying, yes, let's give it to them. We talked about using money from the TIF as, as Kevin just said. So when we finally came to a number for our budget, it was four-hundred thousand dollars. Main Housing wants to see, and I'm surprised it's only two. Initially, I thought they were looking three, four, five years out. They've said to Cadence Kitchen that you need to show you can operate. They're not going to release money to him to purchase a building if next year it doesn't operate. And that's what, I, I understand his frustration, but that's where it is. But the process was a little backwards how we began it with no money, funding attached. I can't sit here and say, yeah, let, we can kind of give him more money because as Counselor Chittam pointed out, that's not a decision we can make right now. So that's why we're where we are because there was an expectation when this budget was created that perhaps we would get, we were going to get opera money. We were going to get some federal funding. We were going to get congressional direct spending. And all of that has fallen through. And that's where he is now in this position of he's got to show he can operate that facility before Main Housing will let him purchase a building.
And, and just to kind of follow up on that real quick, he's exactly correct. These conversations with Main Housing have been ten, twenty, thirty years sustainability. The last call I had with Main Housing, I had their Director of Operations, Director of Homeless Initiatives, their Director of Financing and their Director, there were four individuals on that call. I pleaded our case. I begged. I said, you give our team a chance. Give us a two-year head start and we will make the rest happen. And then, and they sent the letter and then their commitment to us was, you know what? We're only going to put on paper two years, you know, because we have confidence. We have an amazing board of directors. We have an amazing executive team. We, we didn't start the fundraising process because we were under one expectation of funding, you know. So, so we now have the opportunity to know what we need to do. We just need an opportunity to get those doors open or we're going to lose out on this funding completely.
Counselor Longchamp, do you have anything else?
That was a lot to digest. Yeah, wow.
Please use your mic. All right, you're good. All right. Counselor Chittam.
It seems to me as though we have a very discreet and easily defined problem. And if we focus our energies on how to solve that problem, we, we may be able to do that. We have to raise X amount of money somewhere within the next forty days. Seems like a tall order, but if we address that as the problem and we focus on that, we may be able to solve it. There are a number of reasons why we're, where we are now. I don't think it's productive to go back and look at, look at that and, and cast blame and assign responsibility. I think we've got unusually a very clearly defined problem. That's an advantage to us. So all we need to do is put our thinking caps on, identify how much money we need and if in fact August first is the drop-dead date. Very easy to pose questions. Let's focus on those.
I, I agree with Counselor Chittam. I, I don't think it's advantageous to rehash the past here. Sounds like Counselor Galant is going to send us budgets and then we begin to quickly have some, some conversations. Yeah. Yes, Counselor Harriman, did you have something?
Thank you. So I was going to say something similar to Counselor Chittam. It sounds like, or I was going to say, where do we go from here? It sounds like with your revised, you know, if you, if you do reduce the costs in the way that you described, you're looking for two-point-six million dollars for a two-year budget. You have six-hundred thousand committed. So you need two-hundred, I mean, two million dollars.
Plus, well, we have six-hundred thousand carryover plus six-hundred thousand from the two cities. So basically one-point-two million committed.
Yeah, okay. And then, so, so we need to focus on where that money comes from. The second thing is, I don't know who, who is the person to do it, but we could potentially ask Main Housing if they can extend that deadline further. I don't know if that would get granted, but I think that's sort of second priority. Or what we work on, right, what we work on, you know, alongside the funding issue.
I, I, and I think that would have to come from the city personally, just based off my conversations with Main Housing. I think they were, they're, just speaking openly, they're very frustrated with what they feel is a lack of commitment to a city-generated shelter, you know, a city-generated partnership. I think they were really surprised that we weren't able to say the City of Lewiston has committed to year two, you know.
Understood. So I guess, so maybe we can task the Shelter Committee with, with trying to reach out to Main Housing to see if that deadline can be moved. But in the, in the meantime, we also need to be looking at where that funding is coming from because our federal funding unfortunately has dried up.
All right. So it looks like we have a plan. Counselor Galant, you'll send around the budgets? Excellent. Excellent. And then, let's start there, and, and then, yes, either, either administration, myself, or the Shelter Committee could call Main Housing and have a conversation, but I would say let's get the budgets first. Yeah, we are now going to public comment for this update.
I would like to go back to what I said the night you approved this. It was an open budget, an open check you were writing, because there was no budget, fully staffed out. It has now come to be that answer. I hate to say this, because this is something the city, the area needs if we're going to so, not solve the problem, because we aren't solving homelessness in any time close. But we have so many people who are homeless, who need a place. We're going to have to come up with a solution now that somehow bridges this gap between what Kevin has available to him, what Main Housing wants, and how are we going to do that? Because you guys have no authority to spend next year's money yet. And even if you do allot, Kevin, a million dollars from next year, after the election in November, that money can be pulled back by the new council in January, because the new council can change anything. So we are in a quandary, and it's not a good quandary. I don't know how we're going to solve this, but we need to solve it as a community. And that also includes, we need to bring Auburn in on this. Good luck to you people.
Further public comment? Back to us, any thoughts on where we're going with this? Well, that concludes our Shelter Committee update slash report. We are now up to, I'm taking liberty to combine new updates and reports from, from counselors. I have really quick, Counselor Longchamp, I appreciate what you said earlier, I definitely agree that if we see something, we need to say something. And we need to increase, increase cooperation between, between witnesses, victims, increase cooperation with the police. We certainly have cameras, and there's a lot of technology available to us, but it's nothing compared to cooperative witnesses to, to solve this crime. And thank you for acting quickly and providing, it sounds like footage necessary. An update on, received, you know, questions from counselors about the Public Safety Committee, and there's been some, but some changes in admin, but we are actively getting that scheduled right now, and have to, and hope to be able to email you an update here very soon. And that's one of the, the first items that we'll be tackling is, you know, how do we increase communication, community buy-in with, with policing efforts? Increasing trust is important. Thank you. Further, Counselor Glant?
Finance Committee.
Please use your microphone.
Finance Committee, we met, we have our new person, and I guess my question to you, Mr. Mayor, is I'm looking at five names who applied for a position. The lady who showed up, applied to be a librarian counselor, and you somehow talked her into coming to finance. I'm still one down. Is this all politically motivated, or I'd really like to know how you can sit on 21 days of people and not appoint anyone, and expect us to do our job properly, and call around and make sure we're going to show up for appointments ourselves? So maybe you could explain that to me, as, as a Chair of the Finance Committee.
Yes, thank, thank you, Counselor Glant. I did select someone, I'm really happy in her appointment, she's excited, and we still have one more to appoint, so I will be, yes, looking over the names and appointing somebody else, and hopefully being able to do that before the next meeting. When is the next meeting, Counselor? It's in a couple weeks, correct?
Correct, we don't get to summer off.
I appreciate your service, and I appreciate your patience, thank you.
Want to hand that down to her, so he knows the names?
I, I appreciate that, thank you. Further reports and updates from the council? Yes, Counselor Sol?
I want to be very quick, because I know everybody is asleep right now. But I just wanted to let everyone know how fantastic the, this is the heart of Lewiston Festival when on Saturday, even with the circus in town. So I just wanted to thank all of the members of the Lewiston Youth Advisory Committee, they are some really incredible young adults, and I know I say that all the time, but it is true. They did a fantastic job. So thank you to Lewiston Public Works, they were amazing. The Lewiston Police Department, the rescue, the food trucks, the volunteers, everybody cleaned up, amazing, especially the little ones, I want to thank all the little ones. I challenged them all to see who could pick up the most trash, and it was cleaned up very quickly that way. So it was a great time. Batman and the Joker were there, that was a pretty big hit, not so much the Joker, a lot of them cried, but it was a good time, so, yeah, I want to thank everyone who came out. Mr. Mayor and Counselor Harriman, thank you for coming down and supporting us, so, thanks.
I'm glad Batman finally made it. I did see the Joker, he was fabulous.
Yeah, and Kevin was there too, so thank you for that, Kevin.
Counselor Chittam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the Lewiston Auburn 911 Committee, we are still awaiting preliminary construction estimates for the Auburn Hall option. As you know, we're looking at two locations for 911. One would be 85 Park Street. The total estimated cost for that would be 2.7 million, according to the latest memo from Director Hall. Auburn Hall, the estimate, current estimate is .76 million, however, we do not know what the construction costs of renovating that third floor are. I suspect very strongly that since Auburn Hall has already been classified as a category four building, that we would have to go a long way to come anywhere near $2 million in costs. So it's looking to me as though 911 will be moving to Auburn Hall rather than 85 Park, but we're not able to say that for certainty yet, until we get those construction estimates.
Thank you. Further reports and updates from the council? Madam Clerk, I believe we have a, we're heading into executive session.
You are. Item number 18, executive session. Are you all set?
I'm sorry, what, Counselor Sol?
Oh, no, I didn't.
Yeah, no, no, I, I'm for real, we're heading into executive session.
Item 18, executive session to discuss disposition of property of which the premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city. Requested action to enter into an executive session pursuant to main revised statutes annotated Title 1, Section 4056C to discuss disposition of property of which the premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city.
Madam, a motion, please. Counselor Chittam, followed by Counselor Nagee. Madam Clerk, please tell vote.
Counselor from Word 5.
Yes.
Word 6.
Yes.
Word 7.
Yes.
Word 1.
Yes.
Word 2.
Yes.
Word 3.
Yes.
Word 4.
Yes.
Motion passed, I vote of 7 to 0.
Lewiston, we love you, good night, we're heading into executive session, we will not be back.
I gotta get up at 5:30.
Thank you, Dave, for sticking with us.